All right, good evening. I will reconvene in open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on November 7th, 2024. We'll call it at 6:45 PM. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public and we welcome everyone and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting and we have business to conduct. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted by the security attending the meeting. We do welcome civic input but insist that we remain respectful and civil. At this time, please join student Dallas Brooks in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Now for the Texas pledge. Under the Texas pledge, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. At this time, please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. We have on our agenda that we will begin with our open forum for agenda items, but in light of the fact that we've got a bunch of people here tonight waiting to perform, we will skip to recognitions and then come back to our open forum for agenda items. Our first recognition tonight is Item A, a student performance by our Region 5 Middle School Honor Orchestra. Ms. Foster.
Thank you, President Chapa, members of the board, Dr. Smith. Before we begin, I want to say another special thank you to Dallas Brooks, a third grade student from Sheridan Elementary School, joined by a large number of family and friends and her wonderful principal, Karen Hicks. Thank you so much for being here. Great job, Dallas! And that is not all that you're going to be in for a treat on tonight because you can see we have a large number of our junior high students with us tonight. These students represent all 10 of our junior highs. I'm going to give you some information about this orchestra and you're going to just love this. So tonight, this is the Arlington ISD Region Orchestra. Every year, the Texas Music Educators Association hosts regional competitions around the state for band, choir, and orchestra. The North Texas Area Region 5 Competition is open to Arlington, Grand Prairie, Mansfield and Cedar Hills school districts, and some private schools as well. This year, 354 students auditioned from those schools to become a part of this choir. 144 were selected and 91 of them are from the Arlington ISD. Yes. And we even have a sixth grade student from Hill Elementary who was selected this year. That is a huge achievement because these students from all of 10 of our schools, as I mentioned, our junior highs, make up 63% of the region orchestra and that is a huge accomplishment for Arlington. So the students before you qualified for the 2024 Region 5 Symphonic Orchestra. They are the top ensemble in the region. These students are among the highest achieving junior high musicians in all of our area. On November 1st and 2nd, they participated in the All-Region Clinic and Concert at the Dr. Marcelo Cavasso's Center for Visual and Performing Arts where they rehearsed and performed a full concert program under the direction of Tony Regolato, who is the current Director of Orchestras for Tremble Tech High School, and Daggett Montessori, who is with the Fort Worth ISD. So they're learning from some of the best at the high school level already as junior high kids. So tonight, their special performance is entitled Tango de Amor. We all know what that means, right? The Dance of Love by Susan Day. They're going to be conducted by Ron Kennard. Thank you so much, Ron, for being here. He's our Director of Orchestras at Carter Junior High, who's going to continue to serve our students when we move next year to the new Joey Rodriguez Junior High School. And Mr. Kennard is the current Middle School Coordinator-elect for Region 5. You're in for a huge treat, so sit back and enjoy it.[334.81]
...of leaders in our community. This drive is reflected in their support of education initiatives. The Founder's Arena actively supports city and chamber-sponsored programs such as the What's Your Big Idea Entrepreneurship Contest for our Arlington ISD students, fostering entrepreneurship among local students. They actively involve local entrepreneurs and high school students in various events, providing them with a valuable exposure to programming and networking opportunities. This collaborative spirit is highlighted with internship opportunities. They provide internship opportunities to students at our Arlington ISD Dan Dybert Career and Technical Center, contributing to the growth and development of future business leaders right here in our school district. By bringing together a diverse range of stakeholders, entrepreneurs, investors, industry experts, and local community, the Founder's Arena creates a space where ideas can be nurtured and school district partnerships can thrive. They also give me the opportunity to try to say entrepreneurship at least seven times without slipping up. But here this evening, representing the Founder's Arena is Scott Parsons. And I'm going to ask Scott to come to the podium. Scott is not a stranger to AISD. He, I've worked with him for over a decade, and the passion and love in connecting young people with business entrepreneurship opportunities and supporting them and helping them nurture and cultivate their ideas is just stellar. And so, thank you for all the work that you do for AISD.
Thank you very much. President Chapa, Dr. Smith, esteemed board members, a lot of you are friends of mine for some time now. It's really, this is my first meeting ever to be doing something like this. So it's wonderful to stand here in front of you and talk just a second about how much AISD means to me, all of the wonderful, I'll get choked up, kids that we have. They're phenomenal. I've said this since the beginning of the practical program in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce, which I've been a part of for a long time, that if you utilize our kids' brains the way that they're supposed to be, you can literally tell them to go outside and build a rocket, and probably by the end of the day, they'll build a rocket. They're that talented. And so, I really encourage everybody in the business community to take advantage of our great kids and what they have to offer, to help their companies grow, to plug into the community, and more importantly than anything, to offer them mentorship and help them grow. And so, I really appreciate being here this evening and really appreciate this honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. You are such a good partner and the big idea. All this stuff that we do around entrepreneurship in this district, with the CTC really being a big hub of it, we've moved so far on our career readiness in this district in just the last couple of years, and y'all are a really big part of that. So, thank you. Dr. Smith is going to come down and share an award with you, and I'll ask Secretary Richardson to join him as well.
Trustees, Scott, everybody in the audience, I'm excited to present this tonight. I'm excited because I get to recognize some of the great work that's going on for the sake of our students in the school district, but I also want to tell a story. So, I was sitting in a board, in a Chamber of Commerce meeting, probably in March, about a month after I got here, and I heard this guy talk, and I'm like, man, that guy's smart. I need to figure out how we connect with him and get him involved in school district things. Well, that guy was Scott, and I realized, wow, he's really involved in school district things. We got to share a cup of coffee over the summer and spend a little time talking with each other, and the thing that truly impressed me about Scott and his dedication to Arlington ISD, but most importantly, students, was how many times he mentioned students in our hour conversation. It was all about what's best for kids, what he saw in kids, the potential in our kids, and the opportunity that he wanted to help provide for our kids. From what's your big idea to a plethora of ideas for the future, I'm just honored that you're a part of this community and that you're so invested in our school district. Scott, thank you for all that you do for our Arlington ISD students.
Thank you very much.
Scott, I've had the privilege of knowing you, but also serving on committees with you, and one of the things that I admire most about you is that you walk the walk. It's easy to go out and tell people to be involved, tell people what they should do for students, but you go out and do it. And every time you do, you bring others with you and you challenge others to do the same. Thank you for being the leader that we need for our kids and that we want our kids to be able to look up to. We appreciate you.
Congratulations and thank you.
This is a risk management award that'll be presented by Mr. Kael.
Good evening, President Chapa, members of the board, Dr. Smith. I am very pleased to have the opportunity tonight to recognize Kurt Fernandez. He's our Safety Director for the district. If Kurt can come up and join me real quick. I'm going to give you a little bit of background before I give Kurt a chance to say a few things. Kurt Fernandez is our Risk Management Director. He's been recognized as one of the 2024 Risk All-Stars by Risk and Insurance Magazine. Fernandez was one of 10 honorees selected for leadership, perseverance, creativity, dedication, and developing effective risk management solutions that safeguard employees and reduce operational costs. The honor is a product of district collaboration and team spirit led by Mr. Fernandez across all departments. This collective effort reflects service to our employees and our students in providing a safe work environment. The Risk Management Department under Mr. Fernandez's leadership has elevated the awareness of workplace safety and the actions to support it. In fact, the district really did not have a substantial risk management program until the last few years when Mr. Fernandez joined the district. Some of the risk management highlights for the district now include the training of 168 supervisors in accident prevention and accident investigation techniques. There's also been a dedicated effort toward educating district drivers on the critical need to avoid distracted driving. In the last year, in fact, accidents involving district drivers actually went down by about 28%. In addition, the district has also recently received the Theo Award this past September. The award recognizes employer excellence and workers' compensation injury prevention. It's awarded through the Risk Management Institute. The award recognized our district's multifaceted approach to improve workplace safety and reduce workers' compensation claims. Key areas of focus include slip, trip, and fall prevention, motor vehicle accident reduction, and employee engagement. Again, all of this is a relatively new program to the district, and thanks to his leadership, honestly, we're getting all sorts of external recognition. We congratulate Kurt for his leadership on our district's risk management initiatives and the corresponding benefits provided to our students and staff. And, you know, our objective is always, if we take good care of our staff, they'll take good care of our students, and Kurt's certainly contributing to that. So, I want to thank Kurt and recognize him today, and we actually have framed the magazine article for him as well as the publication that we produce internally. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Good evening, respect, honorable board members, President Chapa, and Superintendent Dr. Matzma. I'm a little bit nervous. Thank you very much for giving this recognition. Getting a recognition from the school board is a big deal. So, I wanted to recognize my staff. Jennifer, could you please stand up? Jennifer Brown is the Safety Manager for AISD. And I have one more staff, Tina, she couldn't be here today. Holly, would you please stand up? Holly is my boss. So, I consider this as a blessing for us. Another thing, this recognition belongs to every single employee of AISD who work diligently more often to make sure that we have a workplace, safe workplace, and secure workplace for all of us. So, because of the hard work of the employees and the commitment they show in their work resulted in Arlington School District to receive this national award. So, that is a huge deal. So, this award also underscores the commitment and the leadership provides by Dr. Matzma and his executive team. And I'm very fortunate to work for leaders, all of you are sitting here, so I don't need to say their name specifically. So, their commitment, they not only support the risk management initiative, they promote it, and they champion the risk management initiative when they go talk to their staff. So, that helps us to get the job done. So, I'm very grateful. Mr. Kael, thank you very. When I started here two and a half years ago, he pretty much took me under his wing. So, I learned a lot from you. Thank you for your leadership and giving me the freedom and independence to do the job what we need to do to get the job accomplished. So, I am deeply grateful. I consider myself blessed to work for Arlington School District. Thank you very much for providing the support and the trust in me. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for the work that you and your staff do. Congratulations again. So, we would normally take a brief recess here tonight, but we have a number of speakers on the agenda, I understand, so we will.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
We will move on and do something just a little bit different. I recognize we have a number of speakers here tonight that would normally be on our non-agenda forum, and so, as part of our open forum for agenda items, I will give those folks who are here for non-agenda a chance to speak if they're here. So, Ms. Acosta, do we have registered speakers for open forum tonight?
President Chapa, yes, we do.
Okay, I see two speakers registered for open forum, Mr. Bennett and Mr. Kryle, who have been here a number of times, and even so, I will still preface with our lead-in for rules for open forum. Open forum is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at individuals will not be tolerated in personnel matters and not appropriate subjects. You will have three minutes to speak. Mrs. Acosta will notify you when your time is up by the lights on our dais or on the podium. If you have any documents to share for the board, share with the board, please hand them to our Chief Operations Officer, Dr. Hill. First registered speaker tonight will be Mr. Daniel Bennett on the subject of Tarrant Appraisal District Board of Directors' appointment. All right, thank you, Mr. Bennett. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, President Chapa, Superintendent Smith. Congratulations on being superintendent and board. My name is Daniel Bennett of the White Settlement. Tonight is a very important event. You're casting your ballot. I was here for your discussion on October 3rd, and you chose to nominate Gloria Penya. You want someone who's a friend of public education. You knew Penya when you were in high school, you said. It's important to pass the property value study. I want to talk about this body as a whole, though, and the history of it. The appointments in the past have not been a good stewardship of your interest, and I know there are former elected trustees, Michael O'Donnell and Tony Pampa. And Pampa, when you nominated Penya last time, Pampa was here. He didn't sign up to speak, but you allowed him to speak because of the respect you have for him. Michael O'Donnell allowed that software to go live. It failed Arlington ISD in 2014. Nobody stood up and said, I'm going to recall Michael O'Donnell. He did not protect our interests. He didn't. Mr. Law was allowed to sit there for 10 more years. When Michael O'Donnell abused the property tax code, in my opinion, and asked to be recalled, I sued. I sued this organization, took you to court. I had to take from your attorney during the proceedings on a Zoom meeting, telling me how much better this board is to choose nominees than the board itself. Well, Mr. Pampa gets in there. He goes down to Mansfield. He says, please give me some of your votes, Mansfield ISD. I have your back. I am going to correct the IT situations. They didn't work on IT for 18 months, and then we got ransomed. All of a sudden, it became an issue. So, there was another Arlington ISD former trustee not having your back. So, let's go, let's move on. Ms. Penya, July 22nd, she voted to roll the values from 24 to 25. On July 22nd, she voted to put a 5% for a cap on residential. On July 22nd, she voted for two-year appraisal plan. Tax code says every year. Now, does that, does that have your best interests? Does that sound like she is promoting your cause? Now, in August, when the actual plan came up for her vote, she rose her hand and said, no. But let me share with you. Here's where I see the risk. I have 10 seconds. Anybody's at the 50-second cap on their INS and their property values don't go up based on formulas extending out property values in the future, they could be underfunded and be in default. And I got a lot more. I know your budget better than y'all do and what goes on at the state, but I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. We'll now have Mr. Kryle come to speak, also on the Tarrant Appraisal District Board of Directors. Mr. Kryle, you have three minutes.
President Chapa, board, Dr. Smith, good evening. Y'all know why I'm here, and I know you've all done your research and have been watching your videos, and you've seen me speak to school boards and city councils. If you get a chance, watch White Settlement City Council, October 8th, 1 hour 17 minute mark. It might be interesting. I'd like to get, before I get started on the comments, your agenda packet, it says that you will be, the nominations will be for two-year terms. That's incorrect. Two of the five members will be appointed to one-year terms, and three of them will be appointed to three-year terms. So, Sunday night, I was, went to the TEA website. I started reading up on Tier One, Tier Two, golden pennies, copper pennies, the MCR being compressed every year. And when I was done, I realized why you guys were up in arms at the August 9th meeting because, I mean, you were asking for time to see how it's going to impact your finances and that archaic system. It's confusing. So, three things I'd like to change at the appraisal board that I haven't emailed you or spoke about before. Transparency, culture, communication. Transparency, I want the reasons and the decisions the appraisal district make to be out in the open, and lately, it's, I think it's been made behind closed doors, some of those decisions. Culture, I think everyone should be seeking a high level of function and service from the district. The appraisal board needs to treat entities as a partner, and they need to treat taxpayers with respect and focus on the core mission of valuing property fairly inequitably every year. And for communication, it's for staff and chief appraiser to get out of the office, show up at community town halls, be accessible to residents and businesses, and answer questions. It's also for them to coordinate with you guys and come to these meetings and have discussions with you to let you know activities that may be coming down the pipeline. I believe it'll foster better two-way communication, and it'll add a layer of accountability. Finally, what makes a good TAD director? It's not about appraising property. No one on that board does it, and it's not about being a school finance expert. The board isn't a group of CFOs. It's about process and decision-making. Being a good director is about understanding when you don't know something, and you seek out knowledge from those who do, and you listen to those experts. It's about individual character and whether this board believes the individuals you choose to appoint have characteristics to let their ego get out of the way and realize they can't know everything and seek advice. You have 14 nominees to choose from, and I don't know how you're going to decide. And I know my name recognition isn't on par with the other individuals, and I know you're gunshot from previous appointment processes, but if you could ask yourself one question, do you believe I have any of the qualities you seek to be an effective advocate and director on the appraisal board? So far, the city of Saginaw and Forest Hill believe I do. If you do as well, I humbly ask for your support this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kryle. We'll now move on to our speakers who are registered on non-agenda. We'll go ahead and have them speak at this time. The same rules apply for non-agenda as agenda forum, so I will not repeat them. Our first registered speaker for non-agenda items tonight is Jason Hayes. Is Mr. Hayes present? Okay, we'll come back through and see if he's here towards the end of the meeting. Ms. Acosta, I understand that we have one speaker registered to be virtual tonight. Is that speaker available for, at this time?
President Chapa, yes, you are.
Okay, we'll move on to Jennifer Khalil, who would like to discuss transportation Is Ms. Khalil online? Ms. Khalil, can you hear me?
Looks like she's talking to the other.
Okay, all right. Can you hear me?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you'll have three minutes, starting now.
Okay, hi, I'm not originally from Texas. My name is Jennifer Khalil. I moved to Texas because I truly feel it's better for families. I have two little boys, I'm a single mom, and a homeowner, but I live near Abram Street, and I'm 2.8 miles away from my kid's school. Now, where I'm from, they have bus transportation to help kids get to school. My car engine blew up while I was on the highway with my two kids in it. It was a scary situation, and my car is okay. It's right now in the shop. We're trying to fix it. But my issue is that I found out there's no way to get transportation for my kids to school. Not only does it affect my kids, but I found out a lot of families have to drop out of schools like Wimbush or Corey, Corey Fine Arts Academy, just because they don't have transportation. And I spoke with Jason Gillis Secretary today. She wasn't any help. I spoke with, oh goodness, I forgot her name, but somebody at Wimbush, and she told me about a funding that they have for families that are homeless. I'm like, oh, I could become homeless if that's the way to get my kids to school. I can stop working, and I work for the city of Arlington myself. I'm like, I don't mind if I could just get transportation, but why would I have to? My question is, why are there not emergency funds to help children get to these schools? Why do I have to go to the extreme to become homeless, lose my house, quit my job, just so my kids can get to school or other kids? And I don't mind going to the extreme. So, and that's all I have to say. I just think you guys should come up with funds or ways to help or create, be open-minded to create another hub stop. I think that's what it's called, at least closer to people's houses so they can just get their kids to school on time, because my kids have been in the school since they were four years old. I don't want to pull them for this just because of a car situation. I don't have family here. I don't have anybody else here. It's just me and my kid, that's it.
All right.
That's all. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Khalil. We'll have, we'll have someone from district administration reach out to you. Thank you for sharing these concerns.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Do you have my email, Elise?
Yes, we do have your email here. It's, it's in front of me on the registered speakers list.
Okay, can, should I leave now, or do I just, like, mute myself?
You can, you can leave, and I think most people here would also like to leave.
Okay, thank you so much. You have a great night, and thank you for listening. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will now return to our individuals who are here in the room who'd like to speak tonight, and we'll begin with Kristi Carden, who would like to speak on the topic of IB program. All right, Ms. Carden, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us a place to speak here tonight. I am Kristin Carden, and I am a teacher at Arlington High School. I have spent my whole life in Arlington ISD, first as a student in the James Martin High School system and as a proud parent of a Jones Academy first grader. Hi, Kate, I love you. And now, as an Arlington ISD employee. For 15 years, I have worked to nurture, inspire, push IB students to analyze literature, to think and speak critically, and to create thoughtful and lasting change in their local, state, federal, and global communities. At the last board meeting, a proposal was presented that would consolidate the IB programs in AISD. Even though Arlington High School has 90% more participation in IB courses than any other school in the district, it was determined that the program would not be able to continue. In 2017, our school decided to open some IB classes and allow more students a chance to succeed in an honors-level classroom. We originally asked ourselves, how can we, as teachers, empower a student who should be an AP? But they are struggling with that experience, and they're on the verge of giving up on an honors education. Well, we feel that IB, the method for teaching, assessing, and learning, was best for those students. And so, an IB student is a brilliant and rich thinker who wants to be pushed to think in a creative way. But an IB student is often going to feel lost in an AP classroom. To an IB student, the IB classroom feels like a cool wind of change, one that's full of possibility and choice and a chance for them to be more confident as an individual. Students can receive 24 credits for getting the IB diploma program, but they can also receive individual credits per class. So, in fact, 91% of my IB literature students get credit of some sort in my class. They can get up to six credits out of school like UTA, but my IB literature students can also self-study for the AP English exams, which could bring that total up to almost 12 English credits before they go to school. Today, I ask you to reconsider what your definition of the success in the IB program is. Will you value student choice in all classes, whether or not that student attended a specialized program from a young age? As educators, we must think of our child's future and the path that they may wish to take as they become adults, and we need to honor the taxpayers of Arlington. We want to honor the money that was already spent on these individual programs before we begin developing new ones, but more importantly, we want to show Arlington residents that we hope to maintain the investments that we have already put into these programs as well. At Arlington High School, our staff has over 80 years of experience teaching just IB and over 100 years of experience teaching. And so, again, if y'all ever get a chance, please do take a minute to consider what success truly means in these programs.
Thank you, Ms. Carden. Our next speaker tonight on the same subject will be Kristin Crocker. Thank you, Ms. Crocker. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Esteemed board members and AISD administration, my name is Kristin Crocker, and I'm a teacher at Arlington High School. I've taught advanced classes, both AP and IB, for over 10 years, and in that time, I've come to realize the differences between the two programs and the extreme value that IB offers to our students. We all know people that are good at doing school. They can sit in a classroom and absorb information, memorize facts and vocabulary, write essays, all the things. These are the students that usually do well with AP, because working hard to that specific goal with familiar and defined ways of achievement is a path to success for the typical AP student. However, we all also know people who struggle with doing school. Those people like to move around, ask questions, push boundaries, think outside the box, or throw the box out. These students, the one whose spark just doesn't fit with bubble sheets and fill in the blank, those are our IB learners. IB classes are filled with opportunities for student choice. Within those classes, choices embedded in the assessments, in an experiment, a research project, a presentation, a portfolio, an essay. IB offers these students a path to achievement rather than a path to anxiety. Some, like our emerging bilingual students, consistently do better in IB classes because the requirements allow us to focus on what's strong and not what's wrong. AP simply doesn't allow for that flexibility. Albert Einstein once said, "I have no special talents. I am only passionately curious." I'm confident that Einstein would have been an IB student. IB at AHS looks like Amnesius, who went from crying in my room after school because she was failing biology, to choosing an extended essay in biology because she had a teacher who found a way to explain it to her in a way that made her love the subject. It looks like Jake, who didn't love math. It looks like Jake, who didn't love math, but he did love cars. So he had the choice to study a real-world math application, and he chose how to break down horsepower in an engine as it related to torque. And it looks like Isaac, who's at Oxford University as a Rhodes Scholar. He founded a nonprofit organization called Outvote to help promote representation for the LGBTQIA+ community, and credits IB for his better understanding of and empathy for the world around him. We've built our IB program with careful intentionality to offer diverse choices to match our diverse student body and their needs and goals. For example, IB English requires studying multiple works in translation. Digital Society helps students navigate technology, media, ethics, and policy. The global lens of IB goes far beyond the scope of AP, and so the paths are very different. AP should not be the only path for Arlington High students. With over 70% of the district IB enrollment at Arlington High School, our students have shown that they appreciate and value what the program has to offer. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Crocker. Our next speaker tonight on the same subject will be Elizabeth Fuentes. Welcome, Ms. Fuentes, you'll have three minutes.
All right, hello, thank you so much. I am Elizabeth Fuentes, I am the IB math teacher at Arlington High School. Just a little history, I came from the Arlington ISD school system, I went to Amos Elementary, Workman Junior High, Sem Houston High School. I was always the honor student who wanted to learn, but I would get boarding classes, because it was very rote memorization. It was, here's an equation, solve, here's an equation, solve, here's a problem, what's the answer? And then I took IB. I took the IB program, full diploma, and it was like a program like no other. Because it wasn't only academics. You were pushed to join clubs, you were pushed to become well-rounded. I started joining theater, I started joining band, I started joining our athletic club, because you needed hours to become a well-rounded student. And that really pushed me. And I knew, once I took IB classes, that I wanted to become a teacher and come back and become an IB teacher to teach students and give them the experience that I was able to get from the IB program. IB mathematics is like no other advanced mathematical course offered. It is not only focusing on one singular math course, it's not IB pre-calculus, it's IB math. So we'll see statistics, calculus, trigonometry, algebra, all different math topics within a two-year span. Rather than focusing on, here's a problem, solve it, it focuses on what is mathematics at its core? Because it understands that mathematics, at a rigorous level, doesn't mean, let me give you more problem, let me make the problem more convoluted. It is, can I apply this to a real-world problem? Can I apply it in situations where maybe theoretical math and experimental math don't exactly align? And how do I deal with that? How do I write about math? How do I talk about math? And primarily, it's a discussion-based subject. Similarly, I also teach dual-language geometry, and I believe these students are the perfect candidates for the IB program. They are so creative thinkers, they love to talk, they are the students who ask me why every single day. Why does this work? Why does this work? They would be the exact type of students that I would recommend for the IB program, and I would love to have the opportunity to recommend them in the future, so that they can have the same experience that I was able to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fuentes. Our next speaker, also on IB, is Christine Butilier.
My father would love that you pronounced it that way. Dr. Smith, President Chapa, board members, as the Advanced Academics Coordinator at Arlington High, I want to start by saying thank you. A few weeks ago, you heard an outcry, and the response was swift. It was kind, and it was genuine. And that means everything. It's the foundation on which we will build whatever comes next, so thank you. Dr. Smith, your individual emails to every teacher who wrote to you, oh, thank you. A number of board members reached out to our teachers, thank you. Dr. Wertz came to our campus, he listened intently, he asked really great questions, thank you. We've been spending a good bit of time discussing what does success mean for an IB program? Well, when the International Baccalaureate Organization comes in and evaluates diploma programs, they don't look for a specific metric. It's much more holistic than that, it's much more flexible than that. Really, what they want us to do is be able to answer these two questions. Who are you as a campus? And how does the IB support and integrate with that vision? Well, there are myriad ways we could answer that question, but I wanted to share just four of those ways with you. So what is Arlington High? An incredibly diverse campus, in every metric that you could think of. Well, in IB, we only just, we don't just evaluate, but it is a requirement that students look at everything that they're studying from different points of view. So we have a lot of diversity to leverage, but also, we value it. And in that way, we teach students to value their own unique stories. What is Arlington High? Well, we are a fledgling fine arts dual-language academy. And as Ms. Fuentes just explained, I think we're going to get a crop of IB thinkers. These kids are just as interested in wrestling with the problem as finding the answer. And there's nothing more IB than that. In previous years, that's actually been a bit of a barrier. It's a leap from the traditional way of thinking, right? Let's find the answer. And so it was a barrier for some of our students. The idea that we are going to have an influx of these kinds of kids is very exciting. What is Arlington High? It is an open enrollment campus. Open access is a core tenet of advanced academics at Arlington High. You want to add some challenge to your academics? Bring it, we will help you put weight on that bar. We'll help you pick up the bar for the first time ever, we love that. And we will support you the whole way. By opening all of our IB courses, we are now fully living that core tenet. And what is Arlington High? Home to some amazing teachers. Dang it, home to some amazing teachers. Just as choice empowers students and helps them reach their heights, the same thing happens when teachers can choose programs that inspire them. And that helps us all. Thank you guys for your time.
Our last speaker, also on the subject of IB, is Russell Bartholomew.
You got me all up in my field, Christine. Dr. Smith, President Chapa, members of the board, thank you for your time tonight. My name is Russell Bartholomew. I'm, I've been teaching IB at Arlington High since 2007, I believe. I've been teaching IB longer than anybody else in the district. I've done it all 18 years, out of my 31-year career. And it's been the honor of my life. It's been the most significant thing. I don't know what else I am if I'm not an IB teacher, honestly. And I concur with everything my brilliant colleagues have had to say, but I'm here tonight to talk to you as a parent. My daughter and my son started at, in Arlington High, Arlington ISD, at Marymore Elementary. And my son did okay, he did all right. He was suited for a typical public school education. I'm a product of public schools, I believe in public schools. I am dedicated my adult life to public school. My daughter struggled, and she struggled mightily in lots of different ways. Sometimes it was academics, and sometimes it was the kids, and sometimes, frankly, it was teachers. We tried everything. We tried moving to Corey, and that was better. We tried a charter school, which I don't even agree with. I was very frustrated with that. There were some better things, there were some trade-offs, but she just never felt like she fit. And we tried private school for a couple of years. And that had some benefits, but again, my daughter never really flourished in school. And she's brilliant, and it never made any sense. And then she came to Arlington High School, and she prepared to do IB. And the atmosphere, the culture of Arlington ISD was, of Arlington High School was exactly what she needed, but it was when she started doing IB classes that the switch flipped. She became an excellent student. She's so creative, she's so smart, and she's so caring. And she found her people, and her people found her, and they took her in. And she's, she made lifelong friends. And she told me that IB at Arlington High saved her life, and I believe that's true. She did very well in college at UNT. She's now at School of the Art Institute of Chicago, working on an MFA in film. She either wants to teach college or make film, or both, and she's doing stuff that I can't begin to explain. I did not teach her what she knows, but these folks did. I believe my daughter is alive and successful today because of IB at Arlington High School. And I beg you to reconsider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bartholomew. It is 7:46, we will take a recess. Let's try to be back on the dais and ready to go no later than 8 o'clock. All right, we will come back from recess at 8:03, and we'll move on to our committee and staff report section of the agenda. Our first report tonight is a report from our governance committee. Ms. McMurro.
Thank you, President Chapa. Our governance committee, which is comprised of myself, trustee Fowler, and trustee Haynes, were recently able to meet to add our newly adopted House Bill III goals to the superintendent's evaluation instrument, which is on tonight's consent agenda for your consideration. And we revisited our district legislative priorities. We also have an upcoming Zoom with Strive to fine-tune the language. Not that we're planning to drastically change our legislative priorities, but we really want to make sure that our language effectively communicates to our delegation what our priorities are. And we will soon be bringing that to the board agenda for consideration, most likely on November 21st. And that is the only update at this time.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. We'll now move on to report item B, and that is a report on our behavior support programs. Dr. Smith?
Trustees, tonight, I'm honored to welcome Dr. Buell up to the podium. I swear she was just here. Maybe she's coming back. So if Dr. Buell's not here, I'll present for her. But I wanted to give a little of an intro in all of this. And over the course of my time here, we've gotten some feedback throughout our system that we need to continue to study behavior, specifically supporting teachers, how they work through challenging behaviors in the classroom, and how they are supported with those challenging behaviors sometimes. I give Dr. Buell and Dr. Lena McDonald, who doesn't work here anymore, who retired, but they, in the spring, got a committee started. And tonight, Kristi's going to tell you a little bit about the work that has been going on, based on some of the feedback that we've received, and some next steps.
Members of the board, Dr. Smith? I'm really excited to be here tonight and talk about some of the work that we're doing related to behavior support, and be able to report on the progress that we're making. I think this is probably one of the most important things that we're working on this year, and we're really committed to having an impact with this. And so I'm excited to be here and share it with you. The purpose of this report is to provide an update on the AISD Behavior Task Force work, to also provide an update on strategies that are being implemented to support our campuses in improving student behavior, to provide an update on the progress monitoring of the student behavior in our district, and to also provide an update on the high priority work to improve student behavior. This aligns with the AISD board priorities that y'all have set of safety and discipline, to create safe and productive learning environments in which every student and staff member can thrive. And then also, culture. Establish an inclusive culture of respect, support, and continuous improvement for all of our students, our staff, and our families in AISD. Aligning this one step further to our district improvement plan, our performance objective one is about increasing the procedural effectiveness factor score from the campus safety working conditions. And I'm going to talk about that and break that down for you at the end, on just how we're going to measure that. But we're trying to move that indicator on the staff survey from 3.9 to 4.1. And we got a lot of information in that survey that informed our work, and we think it's important to look at that as a measure. So there are four strategies under the district improvement plan. The first one is really around professional learning for our staff. We also have our second strategy, which is PBIS and restorative practice specialist and campus leadership. We'll collaboratively design and implement behavior support action plans for each of our campuses. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a minute as well. Our third strategy is to design and deliver a systematic process that will support the implementation of social and emotional learning on all of our campuses. And strategy four is to implement system-wide safety procedures and protocols that are aligned with statewide school safety. Why are we focusing on behavior? We've heard the feedback, we know what the data says, and we're prioritizing this because we know that it's critical to the success of our students and to our campuses. We've leaned into the survey feedback from our teachers, administrators, students, parents, that this is a priority, and tried to really understand, where's the gap? What is it that we can do to best support our campuses and our teachers in being able to successfully work with our students? And especially some of the unique behavior challenges that they bring. We've looked at the student behavior, particular to suspensions, disruptions, aggression, and attendance, to really think about what strategies can we put in place to be able to help support our campuses and all of our stakeholders in improving those areas. So we convened the 2024, '25, and I should say, '26 and '27, because we know that this is a big lift and it will be ongoing, but I'm here to report on where we are right now. We convened last April and came together with four areas of focus. The first one was to really conduct a root cause analysis related to the concerns about student behavior. We can do a lot of things, but we need to identify what will be most impactful to address the gaps that are there in our current data and the feedback we're getting within the system. To guide professional learning developed by the task force that's dedicated to best practices and system-wide implementation. This came through loud and clear when we talked to our teachers and our stakeholders. Central office, paraprofessionals, teachers, principals, assistant principals, ask for support in building their own capacity and dealing with what some of them might say, some behaviors that we haven't seen before. And so we have a dedicated staff, we have qualified teachers, we have all of that, but they were asking for some help. And so we've tried to identify what that is, and we've gotten started on that. The third is to help to define a clear and comprehensive model for positive behavior intervention and support at every campus in our district. To be able to help really take this body of work and operationalize it in a way that it makes a positive impact. And then the fourth is to aid in formulating an implementation plan and a progress monitoring metrics. What is it that we're trying to accomplish? How are we going to know if we're making a difference and if we've gotten there? So this task force is tasked with these four primary things to look at in order to really impact behavior throughout the system. So again, we're just starting, and this is the beginning of the work that we've done. So, the Behavior Task Force held town hall meetings last spring to seek feedback from teachers, administrators, central office staff, to really inform the work that we were doing. The steering committee reviewed data, participated in root cause analysis exercises, and identified some key strategies that I'm going to share with you to be prioritized. some key strategies that I'm going to share with you to be prioritized. After that, we took it back to our focus groups to confirm that where we landed was a direction that they felt would be most helpful, and we're going to continue to meet with those focus groups throughout this year. Professional development was designed by the task force or identified by the task force that's aligned with the high priority actions, and we're currently implementing that. The Behavior Steering Committee meets regularly to progress monitor and refine action steps. In fact, we have our next meeting next week. And then the steering committee will continue to seek that stakeholder feedback throughout this year, and we're also working with research and accountability on how we can take the pulse, if you will, with stakeholders throughout the year to make sure that the actions we put in place are having the intended outcomes that we want. If I hope you're hearing one thing, it's about, this is about continuous improvement and continually seeking the feedback from our stakeholders in order to make those mid-course adjustments and ultimately reach the outcomes that we're trying to get to. So our Behavior Task Force, here's a couple of pictures for you. One, when we met with a teacher focus group, and you'll see it was a very interactive process because we really wanted to open it up to stakeholders to give us real feedback that would inform our plans. And then in the upper right-hand corner, that's one of our task force meetings where we were really pulling the feedback apart and trying to prioritize, what's the most important work that we should be prioritizing right now? So far, we've had nine focus groups. We've come back and met with them even a second time already, which included one hundred and forty-eight teachers so far and ninety-three administrators. And again, part of their task was to bring forth and represent the view of other teachers on their campus and stuff. So if we opened it up to that, we would even have a broader range. We will continue to commit to that throughout this year. So one of our first steps, because this was surprisingly, it was probably the thing that was mentioned the most, was we need training. We want, we're willing to do this work, and we want to feel confident in addressing some of these very difficult behaviors, and even for some of our most tenured teachers, identifying behaviors I haven't, I haven't experienced before. So we want to help build that capacity. So we had the opportunity to start in August and deliver some training to all of our teachers. We're about to finish up with some of our secondary teachers this month. The feedback has been very good from our teachers. It was really about trying to gain perspective of behavior through a trauma-enforced lens. It helps answer the question for the teacher that says, I've never really experienced this before. Help me understand. And we have kids who've come through trauma over the last few years and coming out of COVID, and it's different. And so we want to help, and we started with that. Let's really make sure everybody kind of understands and has a risk-free environment where they can ask questions. And so we did some, some training for them, and we'll continue to do so. We identified through feedback that we really needed to focus on, we kind of know what P B I S is, but what does it look like when we really implement it in a way that it's having a positive impact on our campus and for kids? And so one of our initial strategies has been to provide tier-one team training for every campus. In other words, before, we might have trained them and had them go back to the campus and, and deliver or implement on a campus. We've committed to do side-by-side work with them, with the experts we do have in our district, so we can really continue to support the campus on the implementation side of things. That may look very different at Campus A than it does at Campus B, but the way we've set it up is to really try to be there to walk that journey with the campus and support them with that implementation. Because some of those, the principal, the, the P B I S team, the teachers, really do have a lot of autonomy, and that's rolled out and implemented on the campus. We want to be that person that can be beside them to support them with that implementation, be their thought partner, and when something's not working, help them think through that and what they can do. So I'm going to talk in a minute about some structures we've put in place and some adjustments to be able to, to do that. Another high ask or frequent ask in our feedback for professional learning was on C P I training and the C P I refresher training. So anytime we have to do a restraint training or there's a very severe behavior, a teacher is required to go and take by law the C P I training. In the past, if you've done restraint, then you would go have the C P I training unless you're a special education teacher, behavior interventionist, things like that. We opened that up and provided additional training opportunities so that if you are on a response team, if you're a teacher that maybe has a partner teacher that's had C P I training, and you want to have that so that you can be proactive, you can help support, that student might be in your classroom, we've opened it up so we can have more teachers that are requesting that training to be able to attend. And so I think that that's been a help. There's a lot of parts to that training that are very beneficial. It's not just about the restraint. That's the very end of the training, I think Dr. Kleeman would tell us. Really, the first modules of that are about how do we prevent it? And as a teacher, how do we have the confidence in setting up the structures in our classroom so that kids can be successful within that? So we've gotten a lot of good feedback on, on opening up that. We've also, and I'm really proud of the next part of it, we've really focused on custom designing campus training. So we talked, one of our strategies is to develop a campus support plan, and through that, we empower the administration, teachers that are on the P B I S team, to say, what does support look like on my campus? This is where our campus is, and if we had support, these would be our next three steps. And sometimes it's about training. Instead of having a principal have to do turnkey training or, or do their best to be the expert in something, we've aligned our team so that if they say, you know, we're really, we want to look at what the communication systems are because we're getting feedback from our teachers that they don't understand teacher managed versus office managed, and sometimes I send them to the office and I just don't, I don't get feedback on what happened. Then we can go in and support that campus with looking at their communication systems and structures, say during a staff meeting. Instead of a staff meeting, principal says, today, this is what I want to focus on. The principal doesn't have to become the expert in that. We can send one of our team members in to help with that. Again, it's not doing it to them. It's at the request of the campus. And here's some examples that we've done so far this year. De-escalation training. When you have these really high behaviors and a student is really struggling, how do I just de-escalate them? And so some teachers requested that training so that they were armed with the toolkit that could help to, to manage that. Visual schedules and point sheets that we use with some of our students, we had that request. Redirecting student behavior, restorative practices, trauma-informed behavior techniques, teacher coaching on behavior strategies. We're able to now send our team in if there's, say, a new teacher, a bridge teacher, a teacher that's just struggling with something they haven't experienced before, and they're like, come see it. We can now go over to that campus, and of course, we don't have one person for every classroom, but at the request of the campus, we can go over and do some side-by-side coaching. Or if a particular grade level is struggling with some behaviors in a classroom and across their grade level, we can send someone in. They can dedicate a P L C time to, we just want to talk about behavior and what, what can we do to address these behaviors? We can send someone over to support them in that space. P B I S in the classroom has been another request, and then pre-K kindergarten-specific strategies. We've had a lot of requests for that, especially as we've increased our pre-K enrollment. And so now we can send someone that's an expert in that area out to meet with a group of teachers or with administration, just depending on what the need is, to really focus on what are some, what are some developmentally appropriate behavior strategies that we can implement? And then, of course, ongoing administrator training at I L A and A P dean meetings. We just had a meeting with all of our principals today, and one of our focus for today was on behavioral strategies with our special education students. And that, again, came out of the feedback from the stakeholders. So we have that ongoing strand with our administrators all year. We'll, it will have different areas of focus, but all relative to how do we improve behavior and behavioral supports on a campus? This is one example from that district-wide training that was designed and delivered. It really, this is, this is kind of the, the slide that I thought captured the essence of it, but it's about intentionally building teacher toolkits and moving towards instruction for the whole child. We've got great teachers in A I S D, and I believe they are doing the very best they can. I think they're met sometimes with some challenges. I've seen challenges when I say, I'll come help and I'll go out to a campus. I see some things that sometimes I go, hmm, we've got to think about this. And so we want to really continue to build their toolkit because we want teachers to feel confident in that space, not that they have to do it alone, but to give them the confidence. So the, the training really focused on where are students coming from? The behavior is about communication. Behavior serves a function, that there are skill deficits that impact behavior, and that behavior is learned. And when you lean into all of this, you realize that for all of our kids, and we want them all to be successful, that if we can identify those things and realize that, that we can help all of our learners to be successful. So the areas of focus, we talked about the root cause analysis that we did, and again, this is ongoing work. I wanted to share with you the areas of focus that you're going to see all of these strategies align with. There were a little bit of a difference between elementary and secondary. In elementary, it was really about focusing on tier-one pedagogy and engagement. How are we engaging our students? How are we leveraging instructional strategies that really address the learner needs? And so those were areas, and we're also addressing that in our training, especially with our principals this year. We have a focus on that instructional core, which that's a piece of. Building relationships with students, integrating the social-emotional learning. We realize we have a curriculum, and this is all about how do we operationalize it in a way that is easy and efficient for teachers, but yet very effective? And so we're, we're looking at that because it's more than just a curriculum that you shell. It's about it being part of how you interact on a daily basis with kids in the classroom. And then system-wide structures, and I just, I should highlight and bold here, communication. That was, that was a pretty, a pretty big theme throughout a lot of the feedback, and that's something that we want to intentionally help our administrators and our behavior support teams at campus to be able to really think about what does that look like? Because in any of the situations that cause frustration with, with our teachers, our parents, things like that, communication is key. So we want to keep that out on the forefront. And then with secondary, very similar, but you'll notice two kind of differences there. One, they're tier-one. They really called out rigor and relevance for our, our secondary learners. And then also the stakeholder engagement was also part of that communication theme. So we'll continue to come back to these as we work on strategies throughout the year.
Kristi, can you go back to that slide real quick?
Yes, sir.
I told Kristi I was going to jump in on this one.
You're welcome to.
I want to be really clear on this slide. When we say areas of focus, I don't want this to come across as this is a teacher problem. We have teachers doing a lot of these things on a regular basis throughout our system. When Kristi talks about areas of focus and being able to ensure that we're providing high-quality tier-one pedagogy and engagement strategies, we know that is happening on a regular basis in our system. We also know the most effective way to keep students out of trouble is keep them engaged in the class. And so it's a both and, it's not either or. And what I mean by both and is there are constant things that we want to work with our teachers to ensure they have the tools necessary to help them address whenever a challenging behavior comes up in the classroom. At the same time, when we talk about system-wide structures and communication, there are times when our teachers need administrative support, and we've got to be good at it. We've got to be able to address the behaviors that they're bringing to us and communicate well with the follow-up to our teachers. And when Kristi talks about that communication, that's one of the biggest barriers that we found. And so I, as I looked at this slide, I wanted to be sure we, we were really clear. It could read as this is focused on teachers, and I don't want it to read as it's focused on teachers. This is system-wide support. We have to do administrative work and administrative support to provide for our teachers, just like we have to continue to do the professional learning for our teachers to be able to address the behaviors. It's both and as we talk about all of this, okay?
Absolutely. Thank you for kind of stamping that, and that's, again, why we have that as part of our I L A strand for the entire year. So this has led to some of our priority work, and I'm just going to highlight some of it for you. And I put it kind of in, in, in four different areas. One, restorative practices, positive behavior intervention support, social-emotional learning, and then the multi-tiered systems of support. So restorative practices is all about building that relational capacity of campus leadership, support staff, and, and our teachers. We have our R P specialists that are out providing support on campuses, and we're getting really good initial feedback on that, so, so thank you. Part of what we're focusing on with restorative practices is implementing responsive restorative practices process maps, helping people understand, when do you engage in restorative practices? When is it a discipline issue? When is it P B I S? We're trying to bring clarity to the types of support, the types of actions you take on a campus. Building out the A I S D Restorative Practices Continuum to include re-entry practices, because that's a big part of what that is. And part of that is teaching our, our teachers, our administrators, all of our stakeholders that interact with a student, how do we bring a student back in to a setting and help with the relationship there? Help to make changes so that they can be successful as they come back into it? There are a lot of pieces to that, and we're trying to break that down so that we can make sure that we're really trying to address students that may have repeated behaviors over time, because we identified that as an area of, that we needed to address. To develop and deliver relational restorative practice professional learning to teachers using a job-embedded coaching model. Previously, we were kind of structured so that we would do a lot of kind of traditional professional learning, and now we're really putting an emphasis on kind of that just-in-time, let me come and walk that with you and help you so that we're being as responsive as we can. Again, I wish we had one per campus and all of that, but I think we've got some systems that help us to be responsive and also efficient in the way we're going about it. And then to develop and deliver systematic implementation of responsive R P professional learning to our A Ps, to our counselors, to our S O S staff, to our S P E D staff, because it's more than just, to Dr. Smith's point, it's, it's not the classroom teacher. It's the classroom teacher in that they've asked for some things and they want this, this toolkit, right? But it's also about the system, all being on the same page, aligning those arrows and moving in the same direction. So we're trying to identify all of those other areas that we know we need to address. Then for positive behavior intervention and support, that's about providing targeted supports on district and campus lead and lag data. How are we proactively setting up systems and structures on a campus that help to support positive behavior for our students? So part of the initial work that we've identified with that is building the capacity of campus-based tier-one teams through training, coaching, and support. And so previously, we provided a lot of training. The one we're really trying to stamp this year is that coaching and that ongoing support so that when you're in the work, there's someone to help you with implementation and being that thought partner with you to provide system-wide training on the science of behavior, which we've already started that journey. Develop and promote the use of resources to support and implement best practices for teachers. I'm going to highlight some of that in a minute. We want We want to be a resource for our teachers, for our administrators, all of our stakeholders who are experiencing challenges with behavior. And so we've, we've worked on some of those tools and, and resources. To implement behavior support action plans based on the needs of the campus, we have our, our principal and our executive director. We now have, and I'll talk more about it in a minute, but our PBIS specialist, our restorative practice specialist, and our instructional facilitator. All support up the needs of that campus. We can't ask them to drink from a fire hose, so we've got to prioritize. And at the center of that are the teacher leaders at the campus, is the administrator at the campus to say, "This is what would be most impactful for us here," and then we can respond to that. And to implement PBIS tier-two data systems and practices at all campuses. We're not there yet. We have that on our radar. We know that that's really important. If we can get tight systems and structures in place for our tier-one and our tier-two, we should only kind of statistically have about 5% of our students that are presenting those really challenging behaviors on a campus. That's doable. When you don't have tier-one and tier-two systems locked into place and really tight and effective, then what can happen is, that can widen. And you have more students falling into that tier-three zone, which can be really challenging for a campus staff to be able to successfully support. So that's one of our goals this year, is to get really strong with the implementation on tier-one and tier-two. And then implement strong systems of communication. So, we're working on that. Then the social-emotional learning, we know that's key to supporting our, our students. So establishing district implementation expectations for SEL aligned with best practice, giving a lot of clarity on that. To ensure SEL resources are developed and accessible and curriculum central, I'll tell you, we opened up our ILA today with Talisa came in. And every time, she's modeling for our administrators how to access and leverage the SEL, and we're actually having a really good time with it. And we're realizing just how easily that can be implemented, and it doesn't take a long time, but it builds that connection. And so, we're making sure that those resources are readily available, and our teachers aren't having to go out and, and develop that. And then to provide the training and technical, technical support for the SEL trainers. And then the last is the multi-tiered systems of support for behavior. We're working on conducting district resource mapping to identify existing resources and gaps, so that we can make decisions and inform decisions, and that we can also provide clarity. We can make sure that the resources we do have available, that all of our stakeholders know how to best access those and when to access them. And then implement a plan of action to develop additional resources aligned to the identified gaps. So that's, that's on our radar, and it's coming. So, in order to support this body of work, one pivot that we've made as a district is to realign the behavior support department. So the PBIS department is now housed in the Office of School Leadership, and this allows us to do what I was describing. If we're going out and meeting with a campus to determine what support they need and where the gaps are, our executive directors are able to work with their instructional facilitator, their restorative practices specialist, and their PBIS specialist, and sit and have a conversation about what the most important support is for that campus and what it looks like. So it's not being done to them, it's being done in service of their staff. And so, it, it brings them all together and really brings the support, I think, to the campus in a way that we can really operationalize our work and to be really efficient in the way we're providing those services. So there's been a shift in that campus behavior support, which has led to an increased direct behavioral supports at the campus level. Alignment of support with the needs of the campus. So we're really trying to hear that voice from the teachers, the stakeholders, and the principals as we're, we're coming in to, to help. Side-by-side support for the campus PBIS team, so that there's, there's someone there to help them, whether they're looking at data, whether they're thinking about, where are your, where are your behavior problems really coming from? Because until you identify that gap, you can do a lot of things to support a campus. But if, if the issue is really, say, in 50% of your behavior problems, I'm going to throw this one out there, are coming from your cafeteria, and we're overworking with tier-one instruction, you're probably not going to fix your problem. So that's kind of an exaggeration. But we want to be there alongside the PBIS teams to help train them and coach them on how do you use the tools that we have through our report site, through teacher feedback, to be able to make those informed decisions. And so we're trying to do that coaching this year. And then training and support for campuses and implementing restorative practices. So, again, for year one, right now, until we kind of really turn our focus to the tier-two, our first immediate step at the beginning of this year was to really look at our tier-one behavioral systems. All students, all staff, all settings. Making sure we have tight classroom systems and school-wide systems to support the stakeholders on their campus. And so we're really looking at each of these things and trying to identify if there are any missing links and how we can help fill those gaps and support the stakeholders at the campus level. With that, we've, we've been doing a lot of work, and we have a lot of work to go. But we do have some things that we really want to celebrate as far as impact. First, I would encourage you to take a look at the resources that we have out on our AISD website. There are a lot of resources. If a teacher is struggling, maybe a bridge teacher, a new teacher, it may be an administrator that's trying to wrap their, their head around what the communication systems look like, or how do I talk to my teachers about what's teacher-managed and office-managed? Then they can go out to the website. There are a lot of best-practice resources that are out there. I could stand up and tell you a lot of celebrations, but one that I'm super proud of is Sheridan Elementary. Sheridan has decreased 74% of their discipline referrals this year. I could tell you all about it, but what I really want to do is bring their principal to the screen and let her and her staff share with you the impact that some of this work has had at Sheridan Elementary.
Upon my entrance as the principal here at Sheridan Elementary, one of the first things that we did was try to change the culture, not only for the staff, but also for the students. We have created shared values, mission statements, and vision, so that everyone feels welcome and they feel a part of Sheridan. Our school has transformed immensely. And because of the culture, now we see that our academics is starting to go in the right direction. We're very proud of the progress that Sheridan has made, and we are looking forward to bigger, better things as we proceed on this journey.
The Shark Tank has given the upper grades a sense of belonging by they are holding themselves accountable for their scores in reading, math, and coming to school and their behavior. The kids see the scores and they're like, "Ooh, I want to beat..." For example, sixth grade wants to beat fifth grade, and fifth grade wants to beat fourth grade. As you see, fifth grade is beating everybody right now. But everybody has a piece that they're playing. And the kids know that if I don't do my part, then I don't help Sheridan, and then that doesn't help the district. So they want to hold themselves accountable to that.
The school is in wave, like we have all the rules are set and the kids are following. We use Capturing Kids Hearts, which has helped in the classroom to have our contracts, and the kids refer to those if they're doing something. They know what to do to correct themselves. And our scores are coming up now because we are more focused and the behavior is under control. So we want to thank the leadership team and Ms. Hicks for everything they have done to help Sheridan transform into the up-and-coming school of Arlington.
I know. I was super excited to be able to share that with y'all. Those are all examples of that tier-one structure that we're, we're working to get in place at every one of our campuses. And again, this wasn't done to them. This is about a team of dedicated educators at the campus that are working to build that. We're here to provide some support if, if they need that. And our goal is for that to be fully implemented and for it to be having this kind of an impact at every one of our campuses. And here, here are some more great celebrations. Y'all, I could have put a lot of other schools on the left, and I may hear it from them that I didn't, but I couldn't get the print too small. But I put a few to just celebrate the decrease in behavioral referrals that they've had this year. Overall, year-to-date, so 2023 this time to 2024, from the date I pulled the data, 64% of our elementary schools, 80% of our junior highs, and 71% of our high schools, had had a year-to-date decrease in behavioral referrals. And I think that that's a real celebration. And I'll tell you what, there's a whole lot more that were like one or two points, and they would have fit in that, and I said, "Nope, we'll leave that for next time." So, we will continue to monitor that. But our schools are doing really good work for kids, and it's, it's off to a good start. We'll continue to monitor. We're going to look throughout the year at the data. We're going to get that qualitative feedback through our continued focus groups and reaching out to our stakeholders that informed the process initially. And we're also going to look to increase the staff satisfaction survey. We've worked with Dr. Lopez's department and tried to break down the satisfaction survey to say, "Which ones of these indicators might best align so that we know that our staff is saying, 'Yes, we're moving in the right direction and this is making an impact.'" And these are the, these are the indicators that we've landed on and that we will use to measure part of our success. So I'm confident that I know exactly what to do in a lockdown. My campus has a functioning collaborative approach to discipline that provides adequate support for safety issues. My campus leaders ensure safe campus conditions, and the campus approaches to discipline issues are sufficient. We want to see each one of those indicators go up, and that's directly tied back to our DIP strategy and how we're going to measure that. When you see that it's going to go from 3.9 to 4.1, that's the measure that we're going to be looking at. And we'll report out on that. Hopefully, by the next time we do a board update, we can provide some feedback on where we are, but even before we get to the survey data at the end of the year. All right. I'd like to open it up for discussion. And I also want to acknowledge, before I do, Shelley Austin, one of our awesome executive directors, and almost Dr. Austin next week, y'all, is here tonight on behalf of the EDs. So if we have any specific questions about our campuses too, we may ask her to engage in the conversation. So I'd just like to open it up to discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Burrell. Do you have Ms. Fowler?
Thank you, President Chapa. Thank you for this presentation, and thank you for everything that you're doing to try and make the, the behaviors better and less discipline problems. I have a few things. So, as a teacher, teachers are in a classroom to be able to teach. And I know from talking to different teachers, a lot of their time is spent redirecting and redirecting and sometimes sending the student out, having to do the referral, having to call down to the office. And that's taking away from their teaching and the learning by the students.
Yes.
And I see that we're doing all this training for the teachers, and here's what you need to do, and all this. When do we say, "Teachers need to teach," and it's the students and possibly even the parents?
Oh, absolutely.
That need the training?
Yeah.
Right?
Absolutely.
And I feel like we're putting more and more on the teacher. Not only do they have to teach, but now they've got to take all these extra classes, they've got to do all these things because of the behavior. When do we start training the students?
Right.
You know, when they're put in ISS or they're sent to an alternative school, to me, that is the time that those people need to be redirecting their behavior and finding out why it is that they're misbehaving in a classroom. Teachers don't have time for that. We wonder why our scores decline. We wonder why kids are not passing. It's because teachers don't have time to teach. They're too busy redirecting and having to send out referrals. I think it's time that we put some of this back on the students and back on parents. They're the ones that need the training. The teachers have been through their training. They're experts in their field. I just think that we're, we ask too much of our teachers. And I appreciate all of this and, and all the things that you all are doing to try and help the teachers with the discipline problems. But I feel like it's the students. They're the ones that need to be trained and redirected and not always the teacher.
Right.
So I would like to see some kind of a program or some kind of a training that we do for students, because it's usually the same ones that get sent out, that get sent out, that are walking the halls or not coming to school. They're the ones that, that need the, the training. They're the ones that need some kind of special program. Our teachers are there to teach. We need to let them teach.
I, I hear every, I hear everything you're saying, and we, we hear that quite a bit. And let me just, I want to point back to a couple of things because, because I agree, like our teachers do need to be able to teach. I'll take you back to the strategy on, on focusing on the re-entry part. That aligns with exactly what you're saying. How do we get ahead of that so that our students, that it's over and over and over? They may go to ISS, they may have OSS, they may go to Turning Point, they may go to Choices. How do we, if they're at Choices and they're being successful there, how do we have a re-entry plan that allows us to connect the strategies that help them to be successful there, back at their campus, so that they can continue to have that success? So that's part of what we're looking at. I think, I think that speaks to one of them. The other piece that I think I hear in your statement that is absolutely correct is trying to have the systems and the structures in place that set a student up for, for success. Part of that at a campus, when we think about the tier-one, is identifying teacher-managed behaviors and office-managed behaviors. And that's one of the first things that a PBIS team will do. And sometimes you have it, but it's not operationalized. What we're really looking for is, how is the staff co-creating that? Everyone understands it, and there's clarity, and then we're communicating around that. Because sometimes what happens is, you don't have good communication, or you don't have someone following that. So that's one of our goals this first semester, as we're really focusing on tier-one, is to get clarity on that. Then we can start to address some of the frustrations. It's not, it's not, it's a piece, right? So we're trying to begin chunking out what some of those pieces are. And then, in addition, we know our students are coming to us with challenges we haven't seen before. The focus on the SEL lessons and really embedding those at any touch point. It's not even just the classroom teacher. It may, it's how the cafeteria monitors interacting with kids. You know, you can do a lesson in SEL, but when it really is having meaning is when something's just happened or you'd had an interaction with a student, and you're, you're embedding those strategies just in that conversation, and it becomes your way of being. And so we, we know we need to focus on that with our students. And that's, that's part of this first step. But it is, it is a gap, and you're right. And then certainly, you know, with the, with the parent component. And Erin Paralis is on our committee, and while it's not highlighted right here, he has a whole part of what we talk about in our, in our, our committee meeting is, what's our three lines? This isn't an Office of School Leadership work. This is about all parts of the organization coming together and to holding this goal up. Just the face and the voice of it right now. But Erin has been instrumental on that. He's also sat on our Leader and Me District Committee with that, and he's thinking about the implications of that kind of work, even with the parents. So it is going on, and you are absolutely correct in saying that's an area we need to continue to focus on. So thank you for elevating that.
Thank you. You're welcome. And it seems like it's usually the same group of kids that get sent out of the classrooms because they can't behave. You know, what are we doing with those repeat offenders to try and manage that behavior?
Right. Yeah. And, and I can speak to that a little bit. By the time you get to the top of that pyramid that I put in there, and you're talking about, if you're, if you've done it right, your tier-three kids. Probably in any campus, no two children will have the same set of circumstances. And that's why you want to keep your tier-one and tier-two systems so tight that you keep that within the 3% to 5% range, or it can be overwhelming. And so, I can't give you one answer for those. And so, I can't give you one answer for those. What I do know is critical is communication. Support right there at the campus level, which is why we're aligning these supports to say, you know what? If you've got this very serious situation, then we've got somebody that can come walk alongside that teacher or the administrator and be able to help with those strategies. I was out at a campus yesterday that I went and joined, where we were having a difficult situation, and we brought our Special Education Department and our campus together, and I was there too to problem-solve. It's going to take that kind of responsiveness in those situations. That's why I can't give you just one answer. But what I can tell you, the answer is, we've got it on our radar now, and we're doing our best to be as responsive as we can and as quickly as we can. So, it's there, and I wish I had the answer for all of the classrooms right now, and I don't. But we're going to continue to work on what that structure looks like, because I know we all want all of those kids to be successful in our schools. We're committed.
I don't mean to keep hogging all the time, but...
Those are great questions.
Thank you. I think sometimes a lot of the teachers feel like they're not supported. You know, they've done what they can in the classroom. They can't get a child under control, and they send them out. And then, they don't know whatever happened. The communication, like you mentioned. They don't know, well, is he in ISS? Is he walking the halls? You know, what's going on with this student? And I think teachers don't feel like they're supported, that if they send them out, they expect something to be done, and they need to know what happened with that child, what kind of discipline was in place.
Right. And that's where we're really working, even with our administrators, to make sure we're closing that line of communication. You know, sometimes you've, depending on the circumstances, you're collecting data. There's all, there are a lot of different reasons that a student might need to still be in that classroom and you're offering support. What I find is, if you can help the teacher to understand the why and sit and listen to what the concerns are and think about where the gaps are for that teacher, like, it may be that, if you look at her data, this child does pretty good during instructional times, but transition times are crazy. When we can sit and understand something like that, then I, as an administrator, can say, you know what? We can provide this extra support during the transition times. Because if we can help this student to be successful during transitions, we've got them the rest of the day. That takes a lot. And that's an example of where communication is key. We're working on those things. Just like, you know, with teachers, administrators, we're pouring into them as well, because there's not a formula for how to fix this. But that's a very real issue, and we're trying to build our toolkit of everyone that interacts on a campus like that in support of the teachers to be able to help with situations like that.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate you answering my questions, and sorry I took so long, but thank you.
No, it's okay. It's good conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Mr. Will Banks.
Ms. Fowler, hold my beer. Thank you, President Chapa. I'll try to be brief. But first, I want to say, thank you, Dr. Burell, and thank you, Matt Smith. I'm going to sound like a broken record when we know from our own surveys that this is the biggest issue that our teachers have brought forward to us. We know from the Governor's Task Force on why teachers are leaving the profession across the state. This is one of the number-one issues. We know from surveys across the nation
That's right.
that all teachers point to this as one of the biggest problems they face in doing their jobs. So, I agree with what you said at the very beginning. This is very important, and thank you guys for addressing this earlier. When did you say you created the task force?
Last, I think it was March or April of last year that we first met.
Yeah, now, this is important work, and I agree. And I'm going to quote, no, I misread. Let's see, I'm going to quote someone in education who, I've had a lot of conversations about this very topic. I'm going to quote them in saying, "We can't dilly-dabble or nibble around the issues." The edges of this issue, we've really got to address it and address it effectively. Because my fear is, if we don't address it, based on what I'm hearing from interim committee meeting hearings down in Austin and from local delegations and other people across the state, Austin is going to try to solve it for us, and we know how that works out. So, I really encourage, from what you guys have presented, I do have a few questions. So, let's talk, you know, so PBIS is based on this pyramid.
Yes.
And so, the tiers are tiers of, it's more, the tiers are based on the level of behavioral issues that we see in the students, right? Or am I, do I have it wrong?
So, let me, I was going to see if I could go to, hang on one second.
Yeah, your pyramid's a little smaller.
It's real small in here, y'all. And I'm sorry, I put it on there more as, just to kind of...
I do have a PBIS pyramid up on my screen, just for reference.
So, Tier One is talking about all students, all stakeholders, across the campus. And it's about, it's called your Tier One Systems. How do we line up? What are the behavioral expectations? All of those things that have to be in place. When the teacher walked through at Sherrod, and she was talking about the Shark Tank and what they do, and we're all in wait. Those can be different at every campus. What's important is that we have those expectations at campus. What the research will show you is, if you get a really strong Tier One in place, it's going to take care of about 80%. You'll find some different things, but about 80% of student behavior. You may have your one-off, Christie, that talks out or does whatever, but for the most part, students are going to be compliant and have okay behavior. When you think about Tier Two, we start getting into a more specialized. There are different interventions, like when I talked about a student who may have some behavior challenges and just has difficulty transitioning. Sometimes, I've been a principal where you may not have an issue with the child in the classroom because it's very structured, but take them into PE, and it's a real issue. So you start to get into Tier Two, and you're starting to think about interventions that help students to experience success that aren't for everyone. It's thinking out of that box. And that's usually going to be around 10% to 15%. So you're going to have about 10% to 15% across the campus that are going to need that kind of thinking. And if you can get that kind of thinking right, then you've got 95%. I'll share with you, I had, I remember when I was a principal in another district, and there was a little third-grade student who, great student, but really struggled at home, to your point. And when he came in in the morning, we had one of two choices. We could go about our business and let him go to class. It was going to control our day. What we found was the most effective with the student, and he did beautifully. We met him. The guidance counselor met him at the door every morning. If you met him at the front door, gave him choices, are you ready to go class? Or do you want to come? And she had like a calming space in her office area. He might go sit there for five minutes or 10 minutes, and he'd look at her and say, I'm ready to go. And he'd go, and the rest of his day was just fine. Those sorts of things, for some kids, are necessary. It happens before they ever get to the classroom at that point. But you kind of have to identify it, and you have to think a little bit differently. So you get those structures in place. Then you're dealing with that top, the Tier Three students. These sometimes are students that are moving towards special education, maybe in special education, and there are Tier Three students that are not in special education. But they are presenting with a lot of challenges. And as you want to think of your web of interventions or support at a campus, should really, at that point, come together and wrap around that teacher to support those kids. And that's when you're talking about doing very intentional things, very different things, to support the success of that one student. So, we're getting there with how do we build those structures on a campus? That takes a lot of understanding from a lot of stakeholders, strong communication, and a lot of role clarity to get that right. But there are many, many schools that can put that in place. There are some great district examples of that. And that's where we're headed, is we're headed in that direction. And until we get there, we're going to continue with the interim supports, like I've described. Because if we just wait till we get there, we're going to burn some people out. Because people are frustrated, and we've heard that. So we're going to kind of scaffold those supports until ultimately, we can kind of get to that space that we can do things a little bit different. It's going to be a process, an iterative process.
So what percentage of the campuses would you say have a good handle on Tier One supports? And then what percentage have been trained in Tier Two supports?
Okay, so that's a really, that's an important question. So, what we've done historically in the district is focus on have Tier One until you can get to Tier Two. I have a little bit of a different philosophy, to your point. You can focus on Tier One, but that doesn't mean you don't have Tier Two and Tier Three sitting on your campus. And you have to arm people to be able to confidently work through that, right? And so, right now, because we've had Tier One in Arlington for some time, our approach was to reorient our campus principals, our administrators, with the tools and the expectations. So we're not going out and assessing them on Tier One. We've asked them, go with your leadership team. Do a self-assessment. Let us know where you need support, and that's where we want to come in and do a support plan for our campus. We don't want to provide support on something that they already have. It's not a one-size-fits-all. We want to hear from them, how can we help you to get this Tier One lock solid? Our goal is, and I don't have that exact number, so I don't want to make myself a liar right now. But they're in the process of doing that. I would say, so everyone's got Tier One in place. What it really comes down to, and I think you'll appreciate this because you are very into metrics-minded, is it's not just really about saying I've implemented it. It's about what impact is it having? It's not just that I have teachers who've been here for a while that understand it. It's about, my bridge teachers know. So every campus is so different. What I can tell you is, every campus is working really hard to get there, and they have in the past, and I want to honor where they are. And I want to give the principals the ability to assess where they are and to move that forward. I don't have, I don't have a percent of they've arrived at Tier One. And I also think, having a school, when I was in Florida, my own school was a PBIS gold school from the state. So, I would say this, it's always a work in progress. If you ever say, I've arrived at Tier One, you're probably not at Tier One. Because it's about constantly going back and renewing that on the campus. So, by the time we come next time, let me bring some more hard data or share it with you after we have our principals, give them the ability to kind of self-assess. I'll be happy to share that. And then Tier Two, that's why you see that on our radar here. In the past, our approach has been more, when a school gets to Tier One, they can self-select to go to Tier Two. And so, we've had some delay. So the number of schools that have really been trained and supported in Tier Two is not large in our district. We are going to get there. By the end of this year, my goal would be Tier One and Tier Two at every campus. You know, it may not be perfect, but if we can arm them with the resources, tools, training, support to be able to get there, that's going to take a lot of this lift off of our campuses and the stakeholders. And I think what we're feeling, again, we'll stay in tune with that feedback that they're giving us. Simultaneously, we have to be addressing Tier Three, which is why, like today, we had our Special Ed Department out, training our principals, because we have to recognize that. When you get to Tier Three, it's very different. It's very individualized for students. We legally can't say, you're going in this program. There are a lot of steps we have to take. What we can do is help our principals to be informed of that, and we can help arm them with the leadership skills to be able to effectively navigate that, which includes communication with parents, communication with the teachers, bringing a team in place to be able to support it. So, we're trying to push the needle, our strategy, on all of those this year so that we can more effectively implement strategies. You can call it PBIS, you can call it really anything. Take the label off, and you're still going to have learners that fit into those different categories. And so, we want to make sure that we are effectively addressing students that may fit in any of those, because we believe that all of our students should be able to get a good education, and to your point, not take away from the others as well. So, we're working on it.
Yeah, I'm not going to ask you, percentage of how many have Tier One
I wish I had it.
with fidelity. I know we're not there yet. It is frustrating, though, that before I was on the board, long before I was on the board, we started implementing PBIS.
Yes, sir.
And my hope would be that we were a lot further, and that, to Ms. Fowler's point, it's those 1% at that Tier Three that are causing most of the grief at our campuses.
And that's correct.
And so, we've got, we've got to do more than just Tier One. We've got to get to Tier Three and really have effective strategies for those really disruptive moments that are harming the learning of all students and causing teachers the most amount of grief. We've got to address that, and I like that you're seeing that plan. I like hearing what I'm hearing from you. You know, I'm looking forward to us actually implementing it and seeing, getting fidelity at the, all the way up to the Tier Three level. Because when I talk to teachers, that's the biggest frustration, like...
Absolutely.
And, you know, take any strategy in K through 12, that's the strategy de jour, not just with behavioral, but for anything. The death knell of any of those strategies, which may be good, evidence-based strategies, is failure to be able to implement them with fidelity.
Absolutely.
And, you know, and that's a concern I have. You know, given when we started this process and where we are now. But I now have hope. So, great presentation. When we see the success that we have at Sherrod,
Yes.
it's just amazing. And not only that, but you look at their star scores, which have been going like this for the last 10 years. They really popped.
Yes.
And I have no doubt it's because of their effective use of these strategies. Now, I am, like Ms. Fowler pointed out, when I hear PBIS, the science of behavior and restorative practices in this and this and this, I love that we're giving teachers tools in their tool belt. But, you know, I think you alluded to it. We can't press on the accelerator too fast and give them training on, there's just so much that they can learn and implement with fidelity. Is it too much?
Right now, our teachers, I know it sounded like a lot, but remember I talked about all the parts that we're training on? So, if I'm a classroom teacher, if I'm a third-grade teacher, I've only had one day of training right now. I've had a three-hour training. We did it on our district day in August, and we will revisit that again in January. So it's embedded in the school day or in the work time. And in January, we're looking at how can we even differentiate that experience for them so that we can meet their needs. A bridge teacher and a teacher that's been here for a while, it's going to be quite different. So we're moving in that direction. So, that's the training that impacts a teacher. The other training things you heard would be the training we're providing counselors on SEL. The training we're providing assistant principals and principals. We're right now trying to bring all of those pieces together to push it without overwhelming our teachers. Now, the additional support that might be provided for a campus is if a campus requests, say their teachers are having a lot of the Tier Three. Oftentimes, what they'll ask for is de-escalation training. What do I do when all of a sudden I'm teaching and I, the papers go down, the desk goes back? There are, the immediate reaction of the person that's in the room, and even how you train other kids to respond to that can make it or break it in that moment. So we want our teachers to understand that. And so often, we get asked for that training. So if they go into the student support meeting, and the principal says, my teachers are really asking for de-escalation training, then we would come provide it. It would be in lieu of like a staff meeting. And it might not even be for the whole campus. Maybe the principal says, hey, I just need it for my fourth and fifth-grade teachers. Great, we'll be there for you, and we'll deliver that. So, for one individual teacher, it shouldn't be a lot on this. It's about it coming together. The other piece that I think you heard was about the coaching and support. But that's about a teacher struggling in the classroom and... about a teacher struggling in the classroom and has exhausted, they don't, they don't know what else to do. Then we do have the ability to go in and work with that grade level or with that teacher so they can feel confident. And also that person could go in as a thought partner, another set of eyes to say, look, this is what will help beyond that classroom because they're walking it together. And then that comes back through a communication loop to the principal and we start to look at how can we best support? Like when we talked about, listen, if we could just provide some transitional support or this student's having difficulty in PE every day, let's look at the schedule. You can engage the assistant principal in that. So I hope and we'll, it's a good question, we'll continue to ask our teachers. I hope that we've been responsive to their request for training and at the same time not overwhelming them with it. But we'll keep that on our radar and I think that's a good thing to ask our teacher focus group for feedback on.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. I have just a few more questions. You mentioned social emotional learning and other opportunities and curriculum. I assume we've already identified curriculum for SEL and that we're providing already out on Curriculum Central.
Yes.
What are we doing with our after-school partners? We've got this great facility at Peach, for instance, with the Boys and Girls Club.
Right.
That are there and I think, I think that's a missed opportunity for us. If you look at Keller ISD where Dr. Collins is from and Fort Worth, they use, one of their partners is Clayton Youth Enrichment. And I know the executive director is in my Sunday School class. They're all, their big selling point is they've got curriculum, they align it with those two school districts, SEL training, and they're dealing with underprivileged youths that may not come to school with the same emotional support and that other students might. And they're there to fill those gaps in and bring those students up and lift them up in terms of SEL. That's a huge missed opportunity, I think, in we've got a unique laboratory there at Peach where we could really leverage those after-school partners to continue to provide those kind of supports for our students and that kind of emotional growth. And that's something I'd love for us to look at leaning into to kind of, again, leverage.
Yeah. What you're describing are those wraparound supports.
And those wraparound.
And leveraging them. And, and you're exactly right. I think, you know, point well taken and, you know, we meet as a committee again next week and I think we can, you know, continue to, to look at things like that. And again, that's one of the reasons, you know, Aaron Peralas has engaged on there. I know he works with our after-school and, and we can give some thought to that because that's, that's a good point.
Yeah.
It takes everyone, right?
Yeah, no, again, shout out to Sherrod and they're an exemplar that I think we just need to start replicating across this district. And I'll, you know, just close by saying it's that 1%. It's like, what are we going to do to prevent that 1% from creating 90% of the disruption and the frustrations that not only teachers experience in a classroom, but their fellow students.
Oh, yeah.
That really disrupts the learning process. And again, thank you, Dr. Smith, for making, you know, steering us and making this a board priority. And I think it's no coincidence, that's why this is one of the first presentations up on our board priorities. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. Are there any other comments or questions from trustees on this one? Dr. Smith?
I want to thank Kristi for leading this. I know it was a lengthy presentation, but we want to make sure you had some information on this. Two things I want to point out real quickly. Kristi mentioned some highlights about the percentage of behavior referrals and how they've decreased this year. That's a great thing, but there's a reason that isn't our key progress measure. And our key progress measure is about teacher sentiment about behavior supports in the system because we don't want to have a mixed message go out and say that we're measuring success by creating a system where we just decrease the number of referrals that come to the office. That's not the success we want. We actually want our teachers to feel supported with the behaviors in the classroom. And so I wanted to point that out. It's a good thing to celebrate behaviors decreasing in our schools. We will continue doing that. Why? Because that means more kids are learning on a regular basis. But the other piece of that puzzle is, is ultimately our, our key progress measure really revolves around how do teachers feel regarding behavior supports in the classroom?
That's right. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Buell.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. We are actually going to move on to report item D, our 2023-2024 Parents Survey Report. Unless there are objections, I'm going to move the 2019 Bond Update Report to our November 21st meeting. All right, so no objections, we'll move on to our Parents Survey Report and I'll turn it back over to Dr. Smith.
Trustees, Dr. Lopez is coming up and we are grateful for Dr. Lopez's leadership in helping us ensure that we're capturing voice in our system. This is the second survey report that you've received from Dr. Lopez and we have a third that will be coming your way soon.
President Chapa, members of the board and Dr. Smith, thank you for the time to report on the 2324 Parents Survey. So the purpose of this board presentation is to share insights from the 2324 Parents Survey, both quantitative and qualitative, and discuss the campus actions taken in response to the data that was collected. Parents Survey serves many purposes, gives us the ability to assess key factors to help strengthen relationships between parents and the schools, allows us to identify any challenges parents are experiencing, to mitigate those barriers to their involvement, allows us to enhance trust and communication because we hear about their perceptions and their preferences for how they'd like to be communicated with and with what regularity. We're able to address school environment perceptions related to bullying, absenteeism, safety, well-being, and then take action based on the data that we collect. The Parents Survey is for the parents and then driven by the parent voice. The 2324 Parents Survey, we had an opportunity to really collaborate, not just with other departments, but with parent stakeholder groups. And, and that was, it was just a, it really was a gift, honestly, because it allowed the Parents Survey to just be more meaningful and for us to collect the feedback in the best way possible. Aaron Peralas, our Executive Director of Engagement Equity and Access, gave us two opportunities, one before the survey and then one during the survey administration. So the first was with the AISD Family Engagement Advisory Council. And that was before we administered the survey. We were able to reach, attend a meeting and hear from that audience about the topics they'd like to be asked about, the length of the survey, the length of the survey window, and also the mode in which the survey was administered. Crucial feedback of, don't just email us a link. We need something sent, texted to our phone where we can access the link just right then and there, we're busy. And that's, I mean, it seems so simple, but just hearing the parents say that, it was like, we can absolutely do that. It's a very easy thing that we can do and Anita Foster and her communications team helped us with that. The second opportunity was Arlington Council of PTAs. And so we attended that meeting in this room and that was during the survey window. So it was like direct user experience, how was that going? So it allowed us to make any little tweaks, you know, kind of urgently during the survey administration window, which was about six weeks long, so. And that really is a gift because often you have to really have everything planned ahead of time. And I don't think we had anything urgent that we had to address, but it was still an opportunity. And then we did cross-departmental collaboration. So I mentioned family and community engagement, allowed us to have those two opportunities to hear directly from parents, but also coordinated the family engagement liaison to help encourage the participation of the parents at each of the campuses. Communications, oh, I'm sorry, the family and community engagement team also financially sponsored banners for the Outstanding Parent Voice Award campuses. And so communications designed the banners and, and then they also facilitated the text messaging to where we could text parents with the survey link and then they could just take it directly from their phone and created bilingual open house materials. So a card front on the, English on the front, Spanish on the back, had a QR code. So when the parents were attending open house, they could scan it with their phone and take the survey right then and there. So kind of get that feedback when, when it's, you know, it's on their mind. So, and then also Office of School Leadership, they really invoke that competitive spirit with principals and so they made sure that they promoted the parent voice competition. We would send Dr. Buell our percentages each week, weekly, she'd send out her principal update, the weekly percentages to let each learning community know who was in the lead for their parent participation. So all of those efforts helped increase our total engagement rate from 6.9% to 18.1% in 2324. And we had 73 campus, our campuses that participated, so kind of a good generalizable result pool, so. So this is a picture of the 2324 Outstanding Parent Voice Award winners. They were given their banners at ILA. And so you can see going, starting from the left, we have Short Elementary from the Strategic Support Network, Morton Elementary from Southeast Learning Community, Hill Elementary and Butler Elementary, actually both tied for the Southwest Learning Community, Ashworth Elementary at Central, excuse me, in the, in the central learning community. And then who can just, I mean, they had 100%. We could, they're not in a specific learning community, we gave them a banner, they had 100% response rate. Gunn Junior High School and Fine Arts Dual Language Academy for the junior high learning community and then Arlington Collegiate High School for the high schools. So those were the principals that earned the Outstanding Parent Voice Award and, and the campus. I'll now move into the overview of the Parents Survey, of the factors and then, and the results, both quantitative and qualitative. So we calculate an internal parent engagement and satisfaction index. We call it the PEZI. And that's, it's a metric comprised of items that significantly contribute to the way that they respond to an item about recommendation, would they recommend the campus? And so it's also based on factors, items built into positive behavior, excuse me, positive academic partnerships, school safety and well-being, and then inclusive collaboration. Those are the three factors that are a part of the PEZI score. I'm going to give baselines for this year. We're not doing a year-over-year comparison. In 2023, you saw the participation rate and it was not representative of all of our campuses. So doing comparison to that small of a sample, we're going to go ahead and just start with a baseline for the 2324 year and then we'll be able to do year-over-year once we do the 2425 survey this spring. So our parent engagement and satisfaction index score for 2324 was a 3.7. On a scale of zero to five, anything beyond the 3.5, a scale of zero to five, anything beyond 3.5 is considered good. And so we landed in that good favorable area with a 3.7. That's for the whole district, all of the parent responses. The bar graph on the left shows the disaggregation by levels. You can see elementary slightly higher overall PEZI, the 3.9. And then it dips a little for junior highs that come in at a 3.4 and then dips slightly more for high schools at a 3.2. You kind of notice that trend, not just for the PEZI, but also for the factors. So here shows the, the three factors that make up the PEZI. AISD results are on the left. So for positive academic partnership, that factor score was a 4.1. Inclusive collaboration was four. And school safety and well-being came in at a 3.6. That same relationship where positive academic partnership is highest and school safety and well-being is lowest is present throughout the levels. And you can just see that elementary comes in with higher factor scores. They dip when you get to junior high and then they dip a little bit, just a little bit more on the high school level. So this year, Dr. Smith introduced the concept of the net promoter score. So we have, and the PEZI is kind of our internal metric that we can calculate, but a net promoter score is a more generalizable, used in private sectors and other industries. And so we took the concept and we were able to use a question from our Parents Survey because it was asked in the proper format. And so it was, how likely are you to recommend the Arlington Independent School District to others? So the response scale one would be very unlikely and then all the way to 10 would be very likely. So we were able to use parent responses to that item in order to do the calculation. NPS is calculated by taking the percent of promoters minus the percent of detractors and that's where you get the value. So promoters, I've given a little bar graph, or excuse me, a little table here, it shows promoters at the, kind of that second row, those are your loyal advocates, very satisfied and very enthusiastic, likely to recommend and tell people, you got to bring your kiddos here. And those are people that score that item with a nine or a 10, so very likely to recommend AISD. We had 58% of our parents that fell into the promoter category. The neutral category is anyone that scores a seven or an eight on that item. So still on the positive end, just not wildly enthusiastic like your promoters. They're generally satisfied, not, you know, not overly enthusiastic and, but they can be easily swayed by competition and options. And so we had 23% of our parents come in as neutral. And then your detractors are anyone that scores from one to a six. So they're unhappy, they're dissatisfied, they've had a negative experience and they're willing to tell you that and even detract people. Hey, don't, you know, don't go to that institution because of whatever reason. So we had 19% detractors. So we were able to calculate the 58 minus the 19 and ended with an NPS score of a 39. The scale for determining what, what does, what does a 39 mean? Zero to 19 is good, 20 to 49 is favorable, 50 to 79 is excellent, and then 80 or above is world class. So our score of a 39 lands us in that favorable category on the higher end. So it'd like to see us push into, into excellent with a higher net promoter score next year would be great. Those were quantitative results. I'll move into the qualitative highlights. So parents were asked the question, just open-ended, what's working or what's working well or what would you like to see improve? So I'll share the top five appreciations, the themes from, from those responses and then move into the suggestions for improvement. So the first is teacher celebrations. That was our highest appreciation, just general praise for the teachers in our classrooms. That's followed by just general celebration, just happy with the campus, nothing specific, but just overall gratitude for, for the campus of the district. And then that's, the third is our administrative leadership celebrations. So praise for the, either the principal or the assistant principal of the campus. And then that's followed by general staff celebration. So it's not just the AP or the, or the principal, but just overall campus staff or district staff were celebrated and then followed finally by maintain the student well-being and the community inclusivity. So they like, they feel that their kids are safe, that their well-being is taken care of and that they're included in decision-making and they have a community aspect at their And so there was suggestions for feedback. So improved student well-being and community connection, that came in as one of the largest, the largest theme for feedback or suggestion, followed second by improved behavior management practices. So the data shows that on the quantitative side, you're seeing that also on the qualitative side. The third is improved general school safety. The fourth is a recommendation to improve timeliness of communication. And then the, the last is improved parent-teacher communication. So specific to the, the teacher communicating with the parent. So collecting the data, both quantitative and qualitative, extremely important, but responding to the data is the most important. So we'll move into that section. Before we talk about the principal toolkit, I just wanted to give this AISD framework for family engagement. This was an internally developed, agreed upon, kind of cross-departmental creation for the framework for family engagement and AISD. And the, the four aspects of that are creating a welcoming environment, ensuring effective two-way communication, providing school support for home learning, and then having a degree of engagement of every family. So I'm just kind of familiarizing you with that because I'll reference that on the next line. So the, the principal response toolkit, this is basically, here's the data, how can you quickly analyze and use this and then let your parents know that you analyzed the data, you heard their responses, you read through, and then you're making an attempt to make improvements? So the first piece was, is the AISD report site dashboard. There's a detailed data reporting of the Parents Survey results, both the quantitative and the qualitative disaggregated by campus. And that's on our AISD report site. And that's on our AISD report site. Anyone can log in as long as you are an AISD employee, and you can see what the parent survey results are for any of the campuses in the district. Principals were provided with a letter template that tells them, they just basically, kind of like, once you go in and look at the report site, gives you opportunities to plug in some key pieces from just your campus. So your participation rate might be one thing that is in there. Celebrations, it could be a factor-level celebration or an item-level celebration, areas where you see that you could focus on improving. And then the last kind of section of the letter template is insert strategies that you and the campus staff has developed to address any issues. And so those letter templates were provided available in English and Spanish. So again, principals sent those out, letting the parents know, we asked you to take this survey, I really asked you for your participation so I could get my banner. And that was a joke. And I'm acting on the feedback that you gave me. So it's really kind of closing that loop and letting them know that their feedback was used to make decisions and drive change. So then also, principals were kind of refreshed on the Framework for Family Engagement at ILA this summer. And then in addition to just being refreshed on the framework, I mean, it's aligned to T-PES, and they've been trained, but we do have new leaders, so it's always good to just kind of refresh on that. And Erin did that at ILA this summer. But also, there are family engagement workshops for like specific aspects of each of those four areas. So how do you enhance student success? How do you improve communication, create a welcome environment, support diversity, and then, you know, make the school climate warm and welcoming? So there's also not just campus-specific workshops for principals and campus staff, but there are parent empowerment workshops. How do you work with kids? What kind of things can you do at home for those positive academic partnership? Do and do nots, do's and do nots for maybe homework help, you know, don't do their homework, help them with their homework, and here's ways that you can do that. And so that, those parent workshops are available, so there's help on both sides there. Specifically, I just wanted to mention two principals, and it really took the response toolkit, and then we got to kind of know about it, a little success story here. But like, so Dr. Erin Fogelman at Workman, she reached out to us after the parent survey report was put on the report site. And she said, look, I've analyzed my data, I've used the letter template, I'm sending things out, but I don't want to wait a whole nother year to know if the strategies that me and my campus staff have created are working, to know if I increased any of my factors or my items, my overall PEZI. And so it's kind of, it was nice to hear from her. We worked with her on ideas, how she could kind of gather some kind of little pulse checks throughout the year to know if, we just executed the strategy, is it working or not? Do you like it or not? Maybe you could use thought exchange to get some feedback from parents. So kind of there's that quick feedback for her to know how to kind of maybe adjust or tweak or refine any of the strategies that she's using. We also heard that Sophie Hackett Bebenzie Elementary analyzed her data and saw an opportunity to increase parent involvement. That was an area she saw from her results, that she was like, I really, I really would like that factor to be stronger. And so she did two things. She increased volunteer opportunities at her campus. So she encouraged parents to come in and volunteer, whether it's like at the front desk, or making copies, or helping teachers with their bulletin boards. She also increased the number of parent volunteer spots at field trips. One of the things that was mentioned was that there's, it's the same parents that get to go on the field trips, and so she wanted to create more opportunities. And then also increased the amount of lunch spot visits that are allowed at the campus. So, because parents want to come up and be involved. But then she also, for those parents that can't come up to the school and be involved during the day, was like really intentional about her social media efforts to display the student experience, whether it was visuals or just little stories on their, on their social media. That way, parents that can't come up to the school and volunteer were able to kind of just see what their child's doing during the day. It's kind of a way to feel engaged a little bit. And so she said that was an intentional effort of hers. I thought that was, that was pretty interesting. It was really, really a cool approach. So other responses out there, I just wanted to highlight those two. So that brings us to the end, actually, of the parent survey report. So thank you for your time, and it's y'all's turn for the discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez. I have trustees with some questions. Ms. Haynes.
Yes, thank you. I enjoyed the presentation. I don't have necessarily a question, more of an ask. Is it possible? I know the segregated data was sent out or available to employees. Can we have access to the campus-level data? Is that possible, to see the responses by campus?
I don't have any issue with that. I think we're working on you being able to have access to the report's website.
Okay.
And as soon as we're able to do that, we'll make that happen for you.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Report site is the easiest way to go for that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Ms. Richardson.
I have, mine is going to also be more of a comment, more of a feedback than a question. When we are looking at the parent feedback, on the bottom part, it says improved timeliness of communication, improved parent-teacher communication. I know as a parent, I feel this deeply, and I think a lot of us have felt this up, sitting here up on the dais, that, you know, we have GroupMe, where you have Remind, I was sitting here listening, RemindU, Dojo, class Facebook pages that are parent-run, chimp mail emails, booster club emails, sports groups, PTA communications, and the list goes on and on. Seesaw. And how many times I hear, well, I don't know how I missed that, I don't know where it was, and the principal or the teacher goes, I've sent it to you eight different ways. But even though we're getting it eight different ways, we start to ignore it after a while. Oh, I just don't open that email. Oh, I just don't open that. There was a service that we saw that some of our neighboring districts are using, and it is a vendor called Parent Square. And they take all of these communications, and so they save you money by, we're canceling subscriptions to all of these services. You can put everything there, including you can send out forms and permission slips through that. They do translation services. So instead of taking a document and using Google Translate, which we know sometimes that is not our friend, some of our native speakers have told us, that is not what you think it says. They actually do this. Is there a way we could look into utilizing a service like this? I know that other districts in North Texas are already using it. And would the, would the, to me, it seems like this is going to address two of these issues for us, of condensing how we're getting information, putting it in one central location. But if you're, from everything I've read up on their website after we met with that vendor, it was showing that also your booster clubs could use it, your PTA could also. So instead of them having to go out and get their own information, and once again, now a parent is getting it four different ways. It would be one service where we could really consolidate and making sure we're putting out information in a way that's consistent.
The short answer is yes, absolutely. We're always going to look at strategic options for us to improve communication. The longer answer is we're doing a couple of different things to study that. We're doing actually some work with, Anita might have to help me with the name of the organization. It's the National School Public Relations Organization, and NSPR, is that correct?
NSPR.
NSPR, there we go. To be able to assess our communication practices as a school system, and then to be able to figure out what we need to hone in on. I don't want to say we're going to focus on one vendor, because there are multiple vendors that we would take a look at. But I can also assure you that we're already looking at current communication practices that we use, and we're also looking at some various tools that we might be able to more effectively use throughout our system to streamline it. Because email fatigue, length of emails, and multiple communication modes are real. That fatigue is real.
Thank you. And hear me say, I don't even think it has to be this vendor, but what that service would offer us, it speaks to me as a parent, it speaks to me as a trustee, and it speaks to me when I'm talking to stakeholders that say, it's too much. And I say, I agree. What can we do better? So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Ms. McMurro.
Thank you for the presentation, Dr. Lopez, and information about not just the data, but the response. And the only thing I wanted to say is I just really wanted to commend Mr. Peralis and our family and community engagement team. I don't know if everyone knows this, but they are a true skeleton crew. Mr. Peralis, Mr. Eric Phillips, they are a very small team, but the work that they do in conjunction with the family engagement liaisons and representatives at the campus level, it really does engage families. And Mr. Phillips is the one that taught me, there's a difference between involvement and engagement. And that's what we're trying to strive toward, is engaging our families to really be connected to our campuses. And so I, you know, I just really appreciate the information. We have our finger on the pulse now, and I just really hope that we can give Erin's team the bandwidth and the resources and the face time that they need with our instructional leaders to keep that momentum going. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro, Mr. Wilbanks.
President Chopin, I want to echo what my colleague Ms. McMurro just said. And I've got to laugh because on the first slide of the response, the first item is create a welcoming environment. When first coming to your building, what do family and visitors see? One of my go-to friends, who actually works in our district, but he also works in several other surrounding districts because he's a dual-credit instructor for TCC, he always tells me about this one thing. It strike, it's very glaring, and it's the minute he walks up to a building in the surrounding districts he works at, there's an AP out front welcoming students, the first thing he sees is every teacher greeting students, smiles on their faces, and creating that warm inviting environment from the minute students and visitors walk into that campus, when calling the front desk. You know, how that person answers the phone is important. And we've been dropping the ball in that area, and he's quick to let me know that it's been a stark contrast in the high schools that he works at here, with the exception of one, I'm not going to name them, and in McKinney, and in northern suburbs and southern suburbs. It's, so I had to screenshot this and send it to him, and he's like, you guys are doing great things now. You know, this one thing made him happy because to him, you know, it's all about the culture and that culture tone. We're missing the opportunity to set a positive culture and create an opening environment for engagement the minute our visitors walk into that campus in the morning. So little thing, but those little things matter.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. Are there any trustees that have further comments or questions? I just had one quick thing I wanted to point out. If you could go back to the net promoter slide.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to point out how happy I am with the results here. I know you said 39, and we would like some improvement there and to move up, but I'm familiar with the net promoter scale from my work with another organization that relies on it a lot for what we do. And it's a really rigorous scale because I think when you ask people, what would be a score that signals to you something very positive? And depending on the person you ask, they might say 9 or 10, but some of them might say 8. Like, that's just me. I like, you know, I think that's really good if you're an 8. If you ask somebody what is neutral, they would probably say 4 or 5.
Yeah.
And not, you know, for us, 4, 5, or 6 is not neutral. It's in detractor territory. So when we say that we've got 19% of our parents who responded who are detractors, that includes people who didn't just give us a 1 or a 2, I think everybody would agree is a detractor for us. It includes people I think most folks would think are neutral.
Yes, sir.
And our actual neutrals are 7 or 8, which I think most people would understand to be people who have a pretty positive opinion of you.
Yes.
So the net promoter score is a very, it's a very hard grader. And on that very hard grader scale, where we have almost 60% of our parents saying we're a 9 or a 10, I think is a very big feather in our hat that we should be proud of, and we've got room for improvement. We do want to get that NPS score up, but I think we're already in a very good place relative to where, I think without your presentation, if you had asked some folks to just, you explain this system to them and ask them to guess what our net promoter score is, they might not have been anywhere near 39. So I think we already are doing a lot of things very well on a very tough grading system, and I just wanted to point that out.
Yes, sir.
So, Dr. Smith?
I wanted to add real quickly. I looked, and I wanted to provide some context. I think Netflix's most recent net promoter score was a 43. Netflix is considered a pretty good organization overall. I think Apple stands out, and I think the last one that they had was in the 60s. But they're, everybody kind of thinks is Apple is world-class in the world of technology. So I share that with you, and I wanted to, I didn't know Justin was going to say that, but this is a really rigorous process here. And it's, we wanted to do it for a reason, so that we had something to benchmark against in the business world as well, and to say, how are we doing? Because we hear sometimes from the business community, oh, you're not doing that great. Well, according to our parents, we're doing pretty good. Now, we are going to strive to get better because everything I want to do is I want to move those neutrals to the promoters. I want to make sure that people feel so great about Arlington AISD that they're talking about it in the grocery store on Sunday, or when they leave church, or when they're just encouraging somebody to come back to public schools because of their experience in Arlington AISD. So we're going to keep chipping away at this, but I do think that this is a celebration. And I wanted to point that out and thank Natalie for taking the step in helping make this happen this year. So we have something to start looking at that compares us to the business world as well.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Lopez.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes the committee and staff report section of our agenda. We'll move on to our only action item for tonight. Action item A, consider resolution to cast votes for Tarrant Appraisal District Board of Directors. I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Trustees, thank you for your time tonight. I know we've had a heavy presentation with a lot of reports, but I hope you found good information this evening. Tonight, we are bringing to you recommendation for casting votes for the TAD Board of Directors. And the Appraisal District Board of Directors, as you know, we have 406 total votes that we can cast as a system. As the superintendent, it's my job to provide to you recommendations, and tonight I'm providing to you recommendation on how to cast those votes this evening. Obviously, that is your choice, but I do believe wholeheartedly that we've done some good research and tried to figure out who might be good representatives of us on the appraisal board, and to be able to be good partners for us for the future. So at this time tonight, I wanted to recommend the following for you. The, out of the 106 votes, we would cast 120 for Ms. Gloria Peña, we would cast 70 for Mrs. Phyllis Grissom, we would cast 70 for Dr. Daryl Davis, we would cast 70 for Mr. Fred Campos, and we would cast 67 for Ms. Wendy Burgess. The remaining votes, we would cast one for each of the remaining nominees, and that would total 406 total votes. Again, it is, this is administrative recommendation for you all to consider this evening, and open this up for questions for you.
Do we have comments or questions from trustees? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion for Mr. Wilbanks. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, and Mr. Wilbanks, I'll ask to clarify, you're asking, you're moving to approve the staff recommended allocation of votes.
I'm moving to approve the staff recommended allocation of votes as presented in our packet.
Okay. So, okay, Mr. Wilbanks is moving to approve it as presented, and I didn't quite catch the second. Ms. Fowler. Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Wilbanks. I have a second for Ms. Fowler. Any comments or questions before we move on to the vote? Seeing none, let's vote. All trustees voting in the affirmative, 7 to 0. The motion carries. We'll now move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda is a routine part of our agenda where items are grouped together for approval at one time. Are there any trustees who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Mr. Wilbanks.
I would like, I'm missing the list. Oh, I'd like to remove item E, superintendent evaluation instrument for further discussion.
Item E has been requested for removal. We will then proceed to vote on consent agenda items A through E. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through D at this time?
A through D. E has been requested to be removed. That's, that is what has been requested. Okay. I would like to call for a motion for, to approve the cons, I will move to approve the consent agenda. I have a second for Ms. Haynes. Let's proceed to vote on consent agenda items A through D. All trustees voting in the affirmative, consent agenda on items A through D carries seven to zero. We'll now move, move to proceed to separate discussion on withdrawn item E, Superintendent Evaluation Instrument, November 2024. This item was requested to be withdrawn by Mr. Wilbanks. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Wilbanks for discussion.
Thank you, President Chapa. And I didn't mean to cause any alarm with this. I just needed clarification because I believe, it's been a while since we talked about this. And there's three sections. And given that Dr. Smith wasn't here to really impact the section on student outcomes, which is section three, I thought we were going to weight sections one, two, and three differently where his listening tour and the SWOT analysis that he did in section one would be weighted something more like 50%. Section two would be 30%. And then the HB3 goals, which he really didn't have any impact on, would be weighted 20%. More as a rubric for each of those three sections. And I'll open it up to the floor for, for further discussion on that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. I have Ms. McMorrow queued up and she's the Chair of the Governance Committee and to answer those questions.
Thank you, President Chapa. Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. So this is the draft that was sent out initially to the whole board on August 27th for your consideration. We worked in conjunction with Tasby, specifically Mr. Orrin Moore, to develop this instrument. And the weighting may be more appropriate for a future evaluation, being that it, it's more robust. But for right now, given that Dr. Smith has not been here for an entire academic year, Tasby and Orrin agreed that this is a good initial evaluation instrument. We also, I just want to remind the board that we're also looking at time. The initial plan was for, for us to evaluate Dr. Smith in October. That's supposed to be our normal cadence. And the sooner we can get this preliminary evaluation under our belt, the more of a runway we will have to develop a new evaluation instrument that better reflects our district priorities and therefore give Dr. Smith more time to meet his goals.
Just to be clear, Ms. McMorrow, I'm not asking for still delay adoption of this. But to your point, since Matt wasn't here a full year, that's precisely why I think the things that he had least influence on need to have a lower weight in his evaluation. I think that would just be good practice and be fair to Dr. Smith. So we, if my colleagues think that that is a good idea, I've thrown out a proposed weighting of the three sections that I think better reflect the importance of the work Dr. Smith has been involved with to date.
Okay, so Mr. Wilbanks, you would like to move to readjust the allocation of weight for the evaluation instrument?
Yes. I would, I would love, I would love to open it up, discussion. Would you like me to make a formal motion first before discussion?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
Okay.
Just to see if there's interest in, in moving on.
So I would like to move that we modify the evaluation instrument to weight the three sections to more heavily reflect the work, to more fairly reflect the weight of the work that Dr. Smith has been involved with to date and the things that he has the most control over in his evaluation.
Do you have specific weighting that you'd like to propose?
So I would propose modifying the presented evaluation instrument where section one has a weight of 50%, section two 30%, and section three 20%.
So it's 50, 30, 20?
50, 30, 20.
Okay, so the motion for Mr. Wilbanks is to readjust the weighting on the evaluation instrument to be section one 50%, section two 30%, section three 20%. That would require a second. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Mike. Are there trustees with discussion on the motion? Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, President Chapa. One thing that I failed to mention that might provide better context for our discussion and trustee Haynes, trustee Fowler know this, but not everyone knows this. Dr. Smith actually worked alongside us to develop this evaluation instrument. So before we proceed any further, I would, I think it would be appropriate for Dr. Smith to weigh in on if the weighting is something that he'd prefer because I do think that he deserves a voice in his evaluation instrument.
Dr. Smith?
Good evening. Here's what I'd say on this. I did work hand in hand with the Governance Committee on this. And I, I am good either way, the way that the current motion is read or the way it was initially proposed, and here's why. I believe since being here in February, it is my job to own progress so far. And realizing I appreciate the, the acknowledgement that I have only been here for a short time and there is a short runway to impact some of the things that are included in the superintendent evaluation. But I also believe that it is my role to do that. And so in this evaluation instrument that you see in front of you, I believe the way it is laid out is that you can mark in progress on those academic goals. For me, since I've been here, I believe it is in progress. And I have been involved on a regular basis in conversations with our OSL team, with our academic services team, and had a hand in improvement efforts that you're hearing about so far this year. So I am honestly comfortable either way. I appreciate you acknowledging that and saying it the way you did because sometimes it is a little daunting as a superintendent to come in and say, hey, this ship was already sailing and you're getting evaluated on some of these things. But I also want everybody to hear that from day one, I wanted to be a part of this team and I've been a part of the team from day one. And I'll own my efforts along the way and I'm okay with that. Well, thank you for that input. But given the fact that you really started and really had your sea legs in March and we implemented the STAR test in April, I think it's only fair that we adjust the weightings on those so that accurately reflects your impact on those scores.
Okay, are there any comments or questions on Mr. Wilbanks's motion? Seeing none, we'll move on to a vote on Mr. Wilbanks's motion. And again, that's to reweight the allocation to 50% for section one, 30% for section two, and 20% for section three. I will move to vote. Okay, the motion fails by a vote of three to four. We'll now proceed back to the original consent agenda item E as presented. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda item E as presented?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Wilbanks? Is there a second?
Second.
And a second for Mr. Mike. We'll now proceed to vote on consent agenda item E as presented. All trustees voting in the affirmative, seven to zero. Agenda item E passes as presented. We'll now move on to our open forum for non-agenda items. We did have one speaker who was not present earlier when we had an opportunity to move those folks up. I don't see anyone who has entered the room since then, but just in case they're out in the lobby, do we have Jason Hayes? Okay, Mr. Hayes is not here. So we will now move on to our superintendent's comments. Dr. Smith?
Trustees, thank you. Glad that we are at this point this evening. I appreciate your, your efforts and your dedication to our school district as evidenced by sometimes meetings that have a lot of information, but you're processing them and involving them heavily. So thank you for the great questions and comments along the way. I wanted to talk real briefly in the superintendent's report every time that I come to you about district priorities that you have adopted so far this year. And we'll highlight one every month. As you remember, last month or last time I presented to you on this, we highlighted academic growth and we brought up Sheridan. It was great to see that Sheridan was also brought up in the, the behavior piece this evening. They're doing great work at Sheridan Elementary. But tonight I also wanted to highlight the safety and discipline one, create safe and productive learning environments in which every student and staff member can thrive. I think that Dr. Buell did a really good job of highlighting some of the efforts that we're working on and trying to make sure that we feel this in our system. And you see those key progress measures that are in front of you today. But I also wanted to highlight one thing that I think is really important as well is recently, whoops, let's go back. There we go. Recently, I had the opportunity to go visit Marymore Elementary School and spend a little time with Principal Wendy Baker. And as many people think about safety and discipline, you think about the things that you see here. And we are doing those things across our district at every one of our schools. We have armed security officers in compliance with the law that was passed in the last legislative session. They do our door checks on a regular basis. Even in this building, you can see our security does door checks every hour to make sure that our exterior is hardened and make sure that we are complying with the requirements of the state. These are things that people often think about when they talk about safety and security. But the thing that stood out to me in my visit at Marymore Elementary School was not necessarily about these things because I do see these there and everywhere, but was about the way Principal Baker talked about the culture that they have at that school and how impactful that culture is on making sure that the behaviors of students are at the forefront of their work. They've spent a lot of time at Marymore Elementary on capturing kids' hearts as well. So it's interesting that it was brought up at Sheridan and also at Marymore. But Principal, I almost called her Principal Moore. Principal Baker very clearly highlighted the staff efforts to create a welcoming culture where every student feels a part of things in her school is a reason for such a positive atmosphere in the school. She very clearly talked about how teachers are engaged in making sure that every student feels welcome and a part of that school. And she shared with me the story of the second grader who said she felt like she belonged to something by coming to Marymore Elementary School. That is just as important as the hardening of our exteriors of the, of the walls of our school. Safety and discipline comes with creating a great culture as well. And I'm very proud of the work that's happening at Marymore Elementary and the things that we're seeing on a regular basis there. Moving on real quickly, I also wanted to make sure that we provided you some highlights. We've got something really cool happening right now. I had the opportunity to go visit with some students at the STEM Academy at Martin High School. They surprised me a little bit and sang Happy Birthday to me as I walked in. I didn't know they were going to do that, but we had the opportunity to spend a little time together. Five of the students have spent nearly two years working on a project to see how pea shoots, yes, pea shoots, would react in space. And their project was selected to travel to the International Space Station to see how that experiment does. The students got to travel to Florida recently for the launch and saw that launch happen on Monday. And they're spending two weeks conducting controlled experiments here while experiments are happening in space as well. It was great to be able to speak to them, ask questions and hear about their products. Y'all, we got some really smart kids in our school district. It was great to hear how they have been focusing on this project for a couple of years and how excited they truly are for this opportunity. Another set of students doing great things are our students at Gunn Junior High and Fine Arts, Gunn Junior High Fine Arts Dual Language Academy. If you happen to see NBC5, you may have seen the story about the crochet club at Gunn. The, the club was started by two students and now includes upwards of 60 members with different skill levels. The students meet weekly to crochet with a goal of sending their work to children's hospitals and senior centers for the holiday. And congrats to Abby Moore, a junior baseball player from Arlington High. You heard that right, Abby plays baseball and she does it in an elite level. Abby was selected to play in the All-American Women's Baseball Classic in North Carolina. Abby's been breaking baseball barriers her entire life and this is nothing new. Not only did Abby play in the classic, but she also excelled with five hits and six RBIs. Of course, excelling is nothing new for her. She also plays basketball for Arlington and is number two in her class. Congratulations, Abby. And we have more standout students, this time from Segin High School. We just wrapped up an election and Segin sophomore Elizabeth Ojo made her mark on the election literally. While she's not old enough to vote herself, Ojo played a prominent role in Dallas County as the voting sticker she designed in her digital arts class was given to kids in the county who showed up to vote with their parents. Ojo's design was selected as the winner of the county's I Voted sticker contest. Way to go, Elizabeth. That concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Are there trustees with comments or reports tonight? Ms. Fowler?
Thank you, President Chapa. A couple of weeks ago, our very own Vice President Sarah McMura was selected to be in the 40 Under 40. And that is a very elite group chosen by the Greater Arlington Chamber of Commerce for the 40 most outstanding people in the community. And our Ms. McMura was selected to be in the 40 Under 40. And I just wanted to applaud her. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Ms. Richardson?
I have two, I have two reports for you. One would be, I had the privilege the other day on Halloween to be invited by Kristen Crocker and her Thought of Knowledge class, her Theory of Knowledge class, to come and read. Since it was Halloween, I was invited to dress up, but I was told if I came, I still had to bring cream puff. So cream puff and I went. She has a really neat group of girls. It's five girls that are in this class. Here's what's crazy, guys. That's at 6:30 in the morning they come. They take this class at 6:30 in the morning. They are all IB students and taking this class. And we read Grace for President. And Grace for President talks about if she was president, there would be cupcakes every day. But she also says, why can't I be president? I could do all of these things. So what they do is they take that book and then they have a real life discussion about it. Is, yes, this is fiction, it's a kid's book, but what do we think about it? And listening to those ladies, they are really, really brilliant. So even though it was early, it was worth it. And seeing what Kristen is doing, Mrs. Crocker's doing in her class, it was phenomenal. Second thing, several of us had this, we were all invited this weekend to go to the Extraordinary Is Gala. And trustee Mike, President Chapa, trustee Wilbanks, myself were able to go. We were able to see Saint Marshall with the Dallas Mavericks come and be the keynote speaker. And we saw our very own, one of our Sam Houston basketball coaches was granted an award for the, I might get the name wrong. It is the Jamal Brown Invitational. It is where they are bringing in teams from all of the country to come and compete against their local athletes. Games are taking place November 15th. And he was part of the winners along with, we had, Mr. Ward was there with his daughter, Brooklyn Ward, and we're able to see them. And of course, Tashonda Duckett and her mom, Rosie Brown. Tashonda is a graduate from Sam Houston. She has been named on Times and Forbes Top 10 People to Know and Most Influential in the Country. It was amazing to see what she chooses to come and do back here in Arlington. She has never forgotten where she's from. And seeing her mama, they are Miss Rosie, and how she pours into the community. They have also provided kindness benches for all of our local elementary schools on their playgrounds. What this means is that when a student needs a buddy, they can go sit on the kindness bench. And that is the signal to teachers or to their peers that they need a buddy that day.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, President Chapa. I just wanted to give a really quick shout out to the varsity volleyball team at Martin High School and the varsity football team at Bowie High School as being named district champions. And several of us were able to attend that football game last Friday, Lamar versus Bowie. And it really, it was a nail biter. The bands were outstanding, drill team cheer, the athletes. It was an awesome game. So congratulations to all. And thank you, trustee Fowler, for the acknowledgement. But I have to say, Chef Greg Almandarez, who is our culinary teacher at the CTC and the famous, literally famous coach of the Smokin' Ferrets BBQ team, he also was named in the 40 Under 40. And anytime, anytime I could be in any group or category with Chef A, that's what makes me really proud. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. Any other trustees with reports? I just wanted to jump on to Ms. Richardson's comment on the Sunda Duckett. I joke that she goes by T. I joke that T is probably the most famous person that you've never heard of. In addition to what Ms. Richardson said, she's the CEO of TIAA, which is one of the largest companies in the world, was CEO of Chase Consumer Banking, one of the most influential women in the country and on those lists. But she also has a shoe that was women in the country on those lists, but she also has a shoe that was named after her, a LeBron shoe was named after her, and she's on the Board of Directors of Nike. So she is, you know, quite a testament to the caliber of folks who come from this school district. It is 10:12. We do have a Level Four grievance appeal tonight. I will go ahead and recess us at this time so we can get prepared for that. That discussion will occur in closed. We will go into closed when we return from the recess. All right. It is 12:03 a.m., and we will return to open session. The board did not take any vote or other action in the closed meeting. The board has heard the complaint of Mr. John Weszkierski. Do I hear a motion? I will move to affirm the decision of the administration. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by myself, a second by Ms. McMurro. Okay, let's just vote by a show of hands. Everybody in favor of affirming the administration's decision, please raise your hand. All trustees voting in the affirmative, seven to zero. The administrative decision stands. We do want to return back to an item on our agenda from earlier in the meeting. Mr. Wilbanks.
Thank you, President Chapa. Earlier in the meeting, the board voted to adopt the administration's recommendation for TAD. At this time, I would like to add more clarity to my motion in which passed and read the full resolution into the record. So a resolution authorizing the casting of Arlington Independent School Districts allotted votes for the appointment of the Tarrant Appraisal District Board of Directors. Be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Arlington Independent School District, one, that the President of the Board of Trustees of the Arlington Independent School District is hereby authorized on behalf of the Board of Trustees of Arlington Independent School District, cast the Arlington Independent School Districts allocated 406 votes on the official ballot for the election of members to the Tarrant Appraisal District's Board of Directors. Two, a substantial copy of the official ballot, which is attached and provided in our packet and incorporated herein for the intents and purposes. Three, further, the Secretary of the Board of Trustees is hereby directed to forward a certified copy of this resolution to Mr. Joe Don Bobbitt, Chief Appraiser, Tarrant Appraisal District, P.O. Box 185579, Fort Worth, Texas, 76181-0579. Presented and passed on this seventh day of November 2024 by a vote of six yays and zero nays in the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. Sorry, six yays, seven yays, sorry, and zero nays. The following list of votes I would like to also read into the record. One vote for Mike Alfred, one vote for Alan Blaylock, 67 votes for Ms. Wendy Burgess, 70 votes for Mr. Fred Campos, one for Ms. Maddie Peterson Compton, one for Mr. Eric Cryle, 70 for Dr. Darrell Davis, 70 for Ms. Phyllis Grissom.
Recording stopped.
One for Mr. Lee Henderson, one for Scott Lindgren, one for Mr. Gary Losada, 120 votes for Ms. Gloria Peña, one vote for Mr. Vince Puente, and one vote for Ms. Sayed.
So, Mr. Wilbanks, your motion is to approve that resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Fowler will second. We'll move to vote. Okay. The motion to approve the resolution, as a clarification of our adoption of the administrative recommendation earlier, carries seven to zero. It is now 12:08, and this meeting is adjourned.